Well, and it's way more than that. They want to take you back to high school and here's what you've. Tell us about your family.
How many girlfriends you have?
Yeah, doctor visits.
Hello? Yeah, thanks. I, yeah, I had perfect timing, actually.
Is it the one eight hundred? Who cares?
Yeah, exactly. I'll even pay for it. It's a nine hundred.
Oh, funny. Um. See, Pam's gonna have the, uh... Nine o'clock. Get the county board going with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Beth.
Commissioner Benoit. Commissioner Heinon.
Excuse us.
Commissioner Pop.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Cold, but here.
Thank you.
Can we heat it up here?
Yeah.
Um, approve or amend the agenda?
So, Mr. Chair, just one addition. You have a resolution there regarding attendance of, 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 um, representatives at the legislature. You could add that as the last item under Administrator at nine oh five?
Move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Been moved in a second to approve the amend the agenda. Any other additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppo- opposed, carried. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for open form segment of the public hearing. However, public comments or on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn them to vibrate. Thanks. Open form? Nobody's there. Consent agenda. We have items one through ten with the...
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Go ahead, go ahead. Questions been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Monty, our superintendent? Welcome, hey. Didn't get a chance to talk to you this morning.
Welcome.
You were very busy. I could tell. Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and share some information with you in regards to uh, the referendum vote that will be coming before the voters in Sock Rapids Rice Public Schools on February eleventh of two thousand twenty-five. We're not that far away from that, from that timeline. I know, Commissioner Pop, you've seen my presentation when you were at the Rice, uh,
Yep.
uh, city, or City of Rice meeting. I've got some additional information for you to share.
Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, hopefully, um, you'll find some, some additional information here helpful. My goal is to go through and talk about the, uh, the, the process of how we got to this point, to talk about the two projects. Got some videos to kind of help explain, uh, some of the work that we're doing. And then, uh, before I leave, I've got a hot-off-the-presses, uh, one-pager, as I call it. It's got some information, uh, uh, front side and backside that I'll share with you, uh, so that you can have that, uh, as well in case anybody has any questions. So, as we start thinking about and talking about the facilities project, uh, that we, the facility projects that we're looking at, we really need to go back to two thousand eighteen to figure out, to kind of determine and, and, and the process of how we got to where we're at right now in two thousand twenty-five. So, in two thousand eighteen, the Board of Education, uh, went to the community and did a series of meetings. There's eighteen to twenty meetings and really wanted to hear from the community in terms of what are your priorities when it comes to facilities in Sock Rapids Rice Public Schools? And out of those meetings came six key, six key themes, and you'll see them there. Uh, address Pleasant View, uh, do something with the space that you have, uh, do something with the parking lots, including pickup and drop-off, and then safe and secure entrances. And we've done a number of these. As you're well aware, we built a new elementary school at, uh, the Pleasant View site. Uh, we call it Pleasant View Version Two, and that opened up in two thousand twenty-two. And your checkmarks there indicate that we've accomplished those tasks. So, the next, uh, the next two items were early childhood in an outdoor activity space. And during this time that, that we've been using this roadmap that the community gave to the board, uh, we began to think about, you know, it's been six years since we sought feedback from the community. And so what we decided to do was find out, is this really still their priorities? So, in July of two thousand twenty-four, uh, we sent out a community-wide survey to all residents in Sock Rapids Rice Public Schools District. Uh, there was eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-four surveys that went out. We've had two thousand nine hundred and now three responses. The survey's still open. If somebody finds it, it's buried underneath the Time Magazine article on the, in the, in the front room somewhere. They can fill it out and send it in. And of those two thousand nine hundred and three responses, I'll just back up here for a second. They really came up with, uh, a, a couple of pieces of really important information for us. Number one is that we asked them about the idea of an early childhood center, uh, uh, because the one we have, uh, has some issues with it. And fifty-five point two percent of the people who filled out the survey, which is about twenty-six percent, uh, you need ten percent for the survey to be valid. Uh, the company we worked with gets about eighteen percent return, uh, during, uh, with their surveys. In the summertime, it's about fifteen percent. So, the fact we got almost twenty-six percent is really, there's a lot of feedback there for us, and the community wanted to share, uh, their thoughts with us. Uh, what they told us was fifty-five point two percent of those people said yes to an early childhood project. Uh, fifty-three point three percent said yes went to an outdoor activity complex. But when we put the two together, uh, that went to forty-five point five percent. And we did a series of meetings, uh, after the survey results were done. Uh, board members were getting feedback, anecdotally, as was I. And what we heard was two things, is that there was a lot of support for each of those two projects, but they didn't like the price. And at that time, for a median home, it was going to be a price of seventeen dollars a year. So, we've done some things to change that. And so, uh, as the board kept working their way through this, uh, the next step in the process was to do, uh, send something to the Department of Education. It's called review and comment. In essence, you send them their, your plan, and they give you a, the thumbs up, or if they have any questions or concerns. So, what it means is, is that if the Department of Education gives a positive review and comment, which that's what you're looking for, uh, what winds up happening then is, is that if the community approves, you can go ahead and begin the work on your projects. And then, on December fifth, we got a positive review and comment from them. And based upon the, the roadmap that we've been following, based upon the feedback we got during the survey, based upon the positive and review and comment, the board, um, voted to move ahead with a special election to be held on February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five for the purpose of voting on two specific projects. So, let's talk a little bit about the current challenges, and you'll see, I got a video here that'll talk a little bit about that.
So, the original building where childcare is, is about a hundred years old. It was originally a high school. Then it transitioned into a junior high. Then it was an elementary building for fourth and fifth graders. Then it has been now transformed into an early childhood center. So, this building has had a good, long life.
The Hillside Building has, uh, passed its prime. Every absolute inch of space is being utilized in this building that can be utilized, with exceptions of part of the building that can't be utilized because they don't need code. This building, though it's historical, has passed the point of repair.
In our whole building, there's only six child-sized toilets. We also have, one of our classrooms is in our cafeteria. And so that creates a whole bunch of challenges. When I first started, we had one classroom with an accordion divider, and that's what, how small our preschool was. And now, every room in this building is full of children. I think there were maybe three preschool teachers to begin with, and now we have eight, plus a large special ed teaching staff. And so, we've kind of outgrown the walls.
There's demand for more programming, all-day programming potentially, but ultimately, we can't move that direction until there's more space.
The proposed plan right now is a new early childhood center, on a different site, but with much more space. I mean, we are planning to be able to expand, to be able to add a full-day preschool program, and that's what our parents want. Our parents want a full-day experience for their kids.
This is the most critical time in child learning, and whatever we can do here to get them ready for the ages and stages beyond will help make a better school system, a better community. We want to raise strong, responsible, capable children, and it starts here.
We want all of you to be very informed about what's happening and know all of the details. Get to know what this building is about and what we need, and we like to say, the storm starts here.
So, a couple of things with Hillside that I share when I'm doing my presentations. One building was built nineteen twenty-eight, and it's been well taken care of, but it's reached a point where there's going to need to be some significant improvements if we want to keep the building. So, one of the things the Board of Education asked, uh, for us to do is what would it cost to renovate Hillside? So, if we said, you know what, we're gonna stay there, let's renovate it versus building new. So, a couple of things. Number one, it's not enough space. Uh, we do not, we made some significant programming changes, and we do, uh, childcare there. And we are turning people away because, uh, we just don't have the room. And it's a childcare piece that's really bringing that piece forward for us. Um, if we were to rebuild this current space, uh, which is about forty thousand square feet, we can use about thirty thousand of it right now, thirty to thirty-two thousand. It would be two million dollars more to build a brand-new facility versus to renovate. And then you've got a building that's a hundred years old. And we've heard from the community, that just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. And, and I've had some people ask me, well, do you really need to do this? So, every morning, like today, that I wake up and I don't get a text message from our Buildings and Grounds Director that the, uh, boiler has, uh, stopped working is a good day. Um, it's an old steam boiler put in in the early nineteen eighties. If something happens, the, our, our plan that we have is we have to have a company come out of the cities with a portable unit that would bring it up, hook up, could only heat part of the building, and the cost is three thousand dollars a week. So, when we start taking a look at the costs and, and what we would have, it just seems to make sense to move forward with the new building. And we need the space for the childcare piece, as well as the expected enrollment growth that we're looking at for early childhood. And so that's why we're looking at going to a sixty thousand square foot facility. When we take a look...
The original building?
When we take a look at our outdoor activities project, got another video here to share with you real quickly.
So, we're walking into our stadium, getting our complex right now. This is the area where, where we do tickets. It's also our bus loop and our traffic loop for, for us at the middle school. So, we get wear and tear, we get deterioration in comparison to the schools that are in our complex. The main stadium area is relatively small. And to make it work, we added over time decently temporary bleachers. We have opponents from other schools who come to our place and realize that they're playing on a grass field. You can see it, but they're surprised.
Having to get all the way over to the middle school is quite the hassle after school with all the traffic and everything.
We only have one facility that, it all is grass, so not a lot of teams can use it all at once.
When you look at our marching band, they do marching band in a parking lot.
STP is our storm training program. It runs in the summer. Right now, our kids do that in the parking lot.
We have people on our softball team who are scared, can't come and watch because we don't have a path to it.
Our students who need accessibility, we don't have anything here, like a track, that would be something accessible for my state kids who have wheelchair to get there. So, outside, the kids are on the sidewalk, and they're learning how to move their chairs themselves. It's a little dangerous and scary for them to be right on the edge of a sidewalk. And so, to have a track that is safe and accessible that they can get to would be a dream.
When FIAD wanted to go outside for our middle school kids, they couldn't go outside because we had a soccer game that night, and they couldn't ruin the field.
It just is tough for us because then not only are we not out on the field, we all have to cram inside in the div. We have multiple sports that are playing all at the same time.
We have our softball, our baseball, our lacrosse, um, and then sometimes our golfing tennis, that are all using these gym spaces right here at the high school. So, I have kids here till nine o'clock at night, some nights. I understand outside doesn't necessarily provide us with more indoor space, but the turf would. The grass out there gets really swampy and wet. If we could be on the turf, it would free up some of the time that we're asking kids to be here. Maybe they could go home and eat dinner with their family. They could do their homework at a reasonable hour and go to bed.
The proposed plan is to add two turf fields here at the high school. One that would have a track that would run around it with a ticketing concession and restroom facility for spectators and accessible space for all of our families.
I talked to a lot of community members, and they say whenever I drive past the school, I see kids on the football field, I see kids on the softball field, there's always someone playing something out there. And I think that's amazing. And our kids want to put in work. They want to put in the extra time. We have a beautiful building here that has been very helpful, beneficial academically, and I just think the rest of our facilities kind of need to catch up.
We want to make sure that community members are informed, so feel free to go to our website, to come to a community meeting, to give us a phone call. We want you to have the information so that you can vote on February eleventh.
So, when we were looking at this project, the board asked the same question. How much would it cost to renovate versus building new? If we were to renovate the space at the middle school, get the, uh, ADA pieces taken care of, parking lots fixed, uh, would only have one turf field, the cost would be twenty point four million dollars. If we build new over at the high school, would include two turf fields, a, a track, uh, stadium area, the cost is seventeen point seven million dollars. So, it's actually cheaper for us to build new than it is to renovate. Now, we would plan on, if the community says yes, we would plan on putting some district dollars in to take that space at, at the middle school and turn that into, uh, into a really nice middle school facility for the kids to be able to use. Uh, so, uh, as we, as we continue to move forward with my presentation here, uh, I want to talk a little bit about the two proposed projects. So, question number one is an early childhood center, thirty-seven point two million dollars, sixty thousand square feet, uh, improve site safety, pickup, parent pickup, and really getting space that is available for our youngest learners. Hillside was built as a high school, and, uh, we, we don't have, uh, a lot of high school kids that are in preschool. And so the facility itself is not designed to meet the needs of our youngest learners. Question number two is an outdoor activity complex, seventeen point seven million dollars, uh, two, uh, artificial terrfs, a stadium, a track. And I'll show you some pictures here in a little bit, but I think a couple of things that people miss out on uh, is we'll have a ticketing and concession area that will be separate from traffic. Right now, at the middle school, which used to be the high school, uh, when we put up ticketing, uh, it's right in the lane where traffic can, can possibly go. Alright, so we want to try and eliminate that. The other piece is, is that we do have some competitions over at the high school, but we do not have accessible pathways there. And it breaks my heart when I watch people who have mobility issues that can't come and watch their, their grandchildren or their next-door neighbor uh, play because the pathway to get there is just too challenging for them. And so that becomes something that we want to, that we want to try and address with this new facility. So, the big question I get asked is where? Where are you going to build these facilities? Well, what we did, uh, back in December is we did a land exchange with the City of Sock Rapids, and, uh, we're gonna be, we exchanged some land just north of the high school in the Mayhew Creek Park. Uh, my, my cursor kind of points to where it's at. Please understand, this is not what the building is going to look like. This is just a, I asked the architects, give me sixty thousand square foot space. What does that look like in this space? So, you'll see here, there's early childhood building. There will be a playground, uh, that will be for the community, but it will be a littles playground. It's not going to be designed like the ones we have in Rice, or like the one we have at Pleasant View, but it'll be, be for our younger learners. Uh, there'll be a parking lot here. These two fields right here, uh, back in August, we announced a joint venture with the City of Sock Rapids to build two practice fields, grass fields that will drain, et cetera. We have, uh, opportunities to compete, uh, in the grass fields to the west of the high school. We get any rain, especially in the spring of the year, and we're done for two, three, four days sometimes before we can compete. So, this, this space will free up more for us, and it is not dependent upon the referendum at all. It's separate. I just point this out. The question that I get asked is why there? Well, there's actually four reasons why we want to do that. Uh, right now, where this draft area is at, the City of Sock Rapids is building, uh, a Little League baseball fields. There'll be four of them there. Uh, we want to turn our early childhood building not only to a great facility to be used to educate our three, four, and five-year-olds, but also to have it be a community asset. There are things that go on in the summertime, tournaments, et cetera. People might need a place to, to store equipment, uh, when their children are not playing. This last, uh, over the winter break, there was a, a tournament, uh, high school hockey tournament in Duluth. A team from Mankato, somebody stole all of their hockey sticks out of the bus. Okay, the cost for those sticks was fifteen thousand dollars. So, when we start talking about equipment, et cetera, there's a lot of costs, so we can put, they can utilize that space. We also would be thinking about the idea of having it be accessible with the restrooms. So, for those that are in the practice field here, they could, or the Little League baseball fields, they could come here if they needed to, or those that are practicing here could access those. And we also think about severe weather in the summertime as well. It would be a shelter, a place for people to go. And the final piece, why we look at, looking at putting it here, is we're trying to use the resources that we already have. We will need to build some sort of a pickup, drop-off parking lot area, but we also have access to this parking lot here at the high school. Right now, to build a new parking lot is four thousand eight hundred dollars per stall. So, if we can look to utilize, uh, resources that we already have, that lowers the cost or allows us to, uh, put, uh, features in the building that our kids need. The second area that we're, uh, that I'll talk about here, this is where the outdoor activity complex would go. There'd be the stadium feature here, there'd be the track here. You'll notice there's a softball field here. Right here, the track would take care of this softball field. We couldn't utilize it, so we built a new softball field. Up over here in the gray, that's where you would have your field events, the shot put, discus, et cetera. So, this would now be built just to the west of the high school, and we could access this parking lot here, so we wouldn't have to worry about building parking lot space. This is a potential picture, a rendering, of what an early childhood facility could look like. It would be one floor, not two, three, four, and five-year-olds going up and down steps is generally not a good idea. And so this is a possibility of what it could look like. And then I've got a couple of renderings here. This will be new for you, Commissioner Pop. We didn't have these when I was back in December. So, this is what the facility could look like. You're seeing a view from the high school looking to the west. You will see the, uh, the stadium feature here. Uh, there's bleachers here. It's kind of hidden to the green a little bit, but there's also, uh, bleachers that are here. You also will see there's pathways that we have developed that access all of the facility, not just the new, uh, the, the new feature, should the community say yes. And then if we look to the next picture here, this is looking from the west to the east. Again, you can see those bleachers and that stadium feature. There's also bleachers for the track, turf field, which would be, could be used for lacrosse, soccer, football, marching band, our FIAD classes, et cetera. So, what about the cost? Well, I was telling you earlier on, when we got the survey results back, that people thought that seventeen dollars a year for a median home was too much. So, we were able to do some things, uh, in particular with how it could be financed. We were able to lower the costs. And what it means is a median home in, and, and, and Benton County, which is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the tax impact is three dollars a year. Let's be clear what that means. Right now, that same home is paying two hundred and twenty dollars a year on the high school debt. The high school debt falls off. We make the last payment in December of twenty-five. So, the new high school in Sock Rapids Rice is, that debt will be paid off. And what this means is, if both projects pass, that median home will now pay two hundred and twenty-three dollars a year, and it'll be for twenty-five years. So, right now, they're paying two twenty. The debt gets paid off. The last payment's in December. If both projects pass, it would be two hundred and twenty-three dollars. I was in, uh, um, in Rice, and I had a meeting at the Old Creamery, and I was talking to some people about this, and they said, well, yeah, maybe for a lower-valued home or median, it's a little bit less, but what about if it's a higher-valued home? It's going to be a lot more for them, right? Well, we have a tax calculator on our website, and I encourage people to go there and take a look at it. And so I plugged in a home that is valued at five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Right now, they're paying three hundred and three dollars a year for the high school debt. If both projects pass, they would be paying three hundred and ten dollars. Of course, it's a little bit more because the value of the home is more, but there's no exponential increase that's way out of sight depending upon the value of a home. It is based upon what they're currently paying right now, and it would be an increase from there. If people go to the website, they can go there and they can go to the tax calculator. They can plug in what their estimated market value is. It will tell them what they're paying now on the high school debt. It'll tell them what it'll cost if just the early childhood passes. It'll tell you how much it'll cost if just the activity complex passes, and it will also tell you how much it'll cost if both projects pass. As a part of our communication strategy, we've been doing community meetings. We've done four of them so far. Uh, you can see I've been at Hillside, Rice Elementary, the Government Center in Sock Rapids, and Watab. I've got four more meetings left to do, these community meetings, and, and when we're at Hillside, we also do tours. I also share with you in the yellow, there's a thing called a virtual lunchtime FAQs. Uh, I started, uh, at Sock Rapids Rice Public Schools in July first of two thousand twenty. There was this little thing called a pandemic that was floating around, and people had lots of questions. So, once a week, I would do a Facebook Live session where I would, people could write in questions in the comment section, and I would try to answer them. I now do those once a month. As a part of this, we decided to do something during lunchtime. So, if you're looking to gather information, uh, we, you can see the dates that are on there. We do a lunchtime, it's, uh, FAQ, so people can ask me questions. They are recorded. We're getting thirteen to twenty people that are, are watching them live. We do record them and put them out for people to view. The last one that we did, there was over four thousand seven hundred views. So, it's a great way for us to get information about what's going on. Last week, spent a lot of time talking about the early childhood center. We're gonna do one this week. It's not on there. It'll be tomorrow. Uh, and we're gonna spend some time talking about the outdoor activity complex. There are three ways in which people can vote. If they, uh, want to vote on this project, uh, you can do, uh, vote early, uh, absentee, and you can do that at the district office. And we've had a number of people have been coming and doing that. Our office hours are generally seven thirty to four. Uh, but on the website, you'll, we have some extended hours. We encourage people to look there to see where those are at. You can vote absentee by mail. They gotta come here to do that. And then, of course, there's the election day on Tuesday, February eleventh. We have five election spots. They include the Government Center, Riverside Terrace, and Discovery Church in Sock Rapids, and then Watab and Rice City Hall in Rice. Uh, and so again, we have early absentee, voting by in person or in mail, or also can vote in person. There is a, uh, a, a link on our website called Poll Finder. I encourage people to go type in their address so they know which location to vote. Uh, because, just because you live by one of those does not mean that that's where you're going to be voting. So, we encourage people to do that. And then last, but certainly not least, I have one last video that kind of encapsulates everything I've talked about here. So, let's go ahead and share that with you.
I have just absolutely loved the storm community.
It's a community in the school system that really cares about their kids, and cares about the community and is proud to be the storm. And I hope that we have more and more things to continue to be proud about.
So, in looking at the road that we've been on, starting back in two thousand eighteen, there was reaching out to the community, trying to figure out what is it that the community was looking for, and they gave us some really good direction. And we have been following that. One, we built a new elementary school at Pleasant View Elementary.
Thank you.
We've also done some work at the middle school with the multipurpose space. And as we kept checking items off of that list, we began to realize it's been six years, right, since we started this? Are those still the priorities of the district? The Board of Education said, let's go find out. So, we did two different work groups, sent out over eleven thousand surveys. And what we found is that people were telling us the same thing. There is still an interest and a desire for us to do something with early childhood and with activities complex. Those recommendations helped drive the decision for the board to say, okay, let's move forward with these two projects.
But I really respect and really admire about what the school district, what they've done. They truly listen and the purpose of the pudding. If you follow the priority list that they have, they've been following that list, and I think that is an excellent job. They couldn't have done it better.
On February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, the Board of Education is asking the district to weigh in on two projects. Our first project is an early childhood center. The second is an outdoor activities complex. Those questions are independent of each other. You can do one or the other, or both.
When we were starting to explore the idea of preschool, I really noticed that there wasn't a lot of accessibility for working parents. There's demand for more all-day programming, which caught me to reach out to Superintendent Bergstrom. We met almost monthly for an entire year to really understand what it would cost and what it would mean to renovate the current building, if that was attainable, and ultimately, it's not.
For Hillside, if we were to redo that and bring it up to speed, it would be about two million dollars less than if we built a brand-new facility. And we've got a building that's almost a hundred years old. That doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, and we're hearing that from the community.
So, we're walking into our stadium. Still, our main athletic and activity complex that we have is at our middle school. we have is at our middle school across town. In the early nineties, when we were a hundred and fifty-ish kids in a class and playing in the Run River Conference, it made sense, it did. And since then, we've added lacrosse, we've added our soccer programs, and now we're the sixty-second largest school in the state of Minnesota by the High School League enrollment.
When this high school was built back in two thousand and three, that was phase one. The plan was bring the activities complex to the high school. That has not happened, it's twenty years later. One of the questions that I get, I've been asked as we're moving forward with this is the why now? The high school, the debt that we have with that is falling off and will be paid. So what it does is provide us with an opportunity to think about doing these facilities with having a minimal tax impact. If both projects pass on the median home, it's three dollars a year.
The city's partnership with the school district is as strong as it's ever been. A strong school system is going to promote a strong city, a strong community. This decision that we make is a community decision. Your vote can help shape the future of our community.
So a couple of things. First of all, thank you for your time this morning. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to come and share where we're at. With this last video, it was done in the middle of November, so that's why it says mayor-elect and mayor. And I also did ask the mayor for Rice if he wanted to participate and he chose not to. So with that, I will stop talking and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, thank you for presenting Superintendent Bergstrom. Got a couple of questions. You had mentioned early on that it would increase the amount of daycare.
Yes.
How many, would that go up roughly? Because that's a big issue within our county.
Yeah, it is. So right now, that question is, it's a little bit of a moving target. Here's the reason why. Because we have, families have a choice whether to go all day with us and we have a number of kids who get dropped off, I think it's fifteen at this point, that are three, four, or five years old, they get dropped off at six thirty in the morning and don't get picked up till six o'clock at night. So if they're there all day, we have fewer slots that are available. If somebody is there for a half a day, it doubles the amount of slots that we're going to have. We're anticipating, right now, our enrollment is around two hundred and twenty kids. We're anticipating at least room for three hundred students, so that will increase those spaces a lot for childcare. How many will depend upon if they go full day or if they go half day. But it should more than double what we have capacity for right now.
Yeah, I agree that early childhood is a problem, I think everywhere, not just in Sauk Rapids, so.
Yeah, it's a statewide problem.
Yep. Clarification, I just want to make sure that we point out is, you had mentioned a median home in Baton County, not all Baton County people.
No.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
For the district.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, for the district, it's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I'd like if this guy right here would pay, but.
It's a great clarifying question, thank you.
Yeah, the track and the sports complex, if this, if that didn't pass, would there be an option of going back and trying to build like a, like a one field with the track? Kind of like it's over at the middle school right now? Or what is the intention there?
Well, I think, you know, it's a great question. The answer to that question, sure, it could be. If the community says no to one or both of the questions, the first thing that we'll need to do is figure out what their concerns were. What is the reason why they're saying no? And then from there, you start to decide, is this something that we need to do? Do we need to make some adjustments? Does it look like it goes to one complex? Part of the reason why we are looking at two, two different spots is it increases the amount of turf field that you have for accessibility. And in the spring of the year, you can play softball on a turf field where, and sometimes it's the first part of May before we can get outside and play, right? And the other reason is, is when you put a track there, your fans get a long ways away from, from the action, whether it be soccer, football, lacrosse, et cetera. So it gets them closer. And the cost was minimally different than if you, to have two separate versus one, if you include two turf fields. That make sense?
Yep. Number four was, this is my last one, it was, I'm a little late to the game on this one, but I know back when I was on the council of Sauk Rapids, we talked about a field house there. And if for some reason that didn't pass, the outdoor activity part, I would like to see you bring something back with maybe one field and a field house. Because I think you meant, there's a lot of things that, like the sixty-second most students, you know, biggest school, you know, you look at that, I'd like to see how many of those, those schools above us have track, you know, indoor field houses. I'm going to say probably eighty, ninety percent of them.
A lot of them do and most of them are done by the city that they're, that they're in. Interestingly enough, when you make mention of that, in our survey, there was a number of comments from the community about doing something with the city with regards to some sort of a field house or a facility for the community. From a school district perspective, we love, we love to partner. I do have some concerns that, my job is to educate children. And if our, our facilities get utilized a lot by our community and we would continue to have that taking place, but if there was an opportunity for us to partner and look at doing something that could be for the, for the community, we would certainly look at doing that, absolutely.
Mr. Chair.
Brad, thank you for your presentation. Excellent information. A lot of it's new to me, of course, I don't live in the Sauk Rapids district, so I appreciate that. With that, I have a couple of questions, mostly from my own education, because some of these people probably already know the answer. So sixty thousand square feet on that early childhood, is, how long do you expect that to take you down the road? And secondly, can you add on to it?
Yeah, so to your first question, where the hope is, is that the building will take, it'll last there for at least fifty years, is what we're looking for. And yes, there is an opportunity for there to be some add-on with that. If I go back to the drawing, the main interests, this, or the building itself, this gray here and this gray here, whenever we look at a building, we always ask, is there an opportunity to add on, should the need be there? And there is definitely, with this design, there is.
Okay.
Okay, so there is room for more than sixty thousand square feet on the ten acres that we, that we got from the city in the land swap.
All right, great. And how about the term of this referendum? How long is this?
It's for twenty-five years.
Twenty-five, okay.
Yep, yep. And it's same as what the bond was for the high school and it's the same as what the bond is for Pleasant View, twenty-five years.
And also, could I ask you what it costs you to do your community wide survey? I think you mentioned, you maybe had a partner with that, did you contract that out or?
We worked with School Perceptions and the cost for that was around twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that included the mailing, their fees, their services, the printing of the surveys, the whole nine yards, it was around twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
You bet.
Anything, Pam? I have one question that after you did your presentation in Rice, that was asked a little bit like, nothing was said about what's the impact to agriculture?
So on our website, there is, that tax calculator, there is a opportunity for those who are in the area of ag can go and calculate what that is. And it's all dependent upon the, the value of the land per acre. So the one nice thing that Minnesota has is they have the ag tax credit.
Right.
And that's like seventy or seventy-five percent comes back to the farmer in terms of an, of a tax credit. And I don't even remember the exact dollar amount, but it's, it's, it's a few cents, starting at the lowest dollar amount to I think four cents per acre at the highest dollar amount. But we have, we have a partner, Ellers is who that is, and there's a contact information for there for commercial as well, that they can certainly reach out to them and gain more access if what we have on the website does not help them. But there, of course, there is an impact, there's going to be for the farm, it's going to be for the house and, and one acre. And then there's the ag land, because when you, there's two different things that school districts can do, right? They can raise money through a levy, you levy to learn and you bond to build, okay? When you levy for, for ag, it is only the house and one acre. When you bond, it's the house, one acre, and the land itself, okay? And that's, that's really the difference between the two of them. And so there is an impact, but I'm trying, I don't want to quote for sure, because I didn't look that, I don't recall right off the hand what the dollar amount is, but it is, it's a few cents per acre if both projects pass. If only one passes, that dollar amount could be less.
I know it's been a concern, which naturally it would be.
I've been doing this for thirty-six years and for thirty-six years, whenever there is some sort of an ask from the taxpayer, taxpayers get concerned about their own pocketbooks and it certainly, for both commercial and for, for ag people, it is a concern to them as well. So fully understand.
And you came from an ag community prior to coming to Sauk Rapids, I believe.
Yeah, I did. Well, it was more of a, where I grew up at, the ag was, was, was logging.
Okay.
And so you're not doing wheat or corn, but the timber industry is very much in the same way in that it's, it's about making sure that, that the land is being taken care of and providing a living for people.
Mr. Chair, one further question, Brad. So you mentioned the new high school referendum will be paid off at the end of twenty-five. Is there, is that your only debt? And, or do you have an operating levy in place also?
So to the first question, no, it's not our only debt. The other debt we have is Pleasant View Elementary. And we do not have an operating levy. We are one of, I think, ninety-two districts in the state of Minnesota that does not have a voter approved operating levy. School districts are allowed to, to, and this was a number of years ago, we're allowed to levy without voter approval and it's like seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per ADM. An ADM is, is a student that, it's called average daily membership. If a student attends all year, or they're enrolled with us all year, that counts as one ADM. If they're here for part of the year, then that's a partial. So for each ADM that we get, there's seven hundred and twenty-four dollars, but we have no voter approved, like many of the schools in the surrounding area do. Thank you.
Good question, at least, at least there's a cap on that one.
Yeah.
There's one out there that's not.
Anything else?
I got one more question. You had talked about the, the current football field and stadium area. What, what do you, what are they figuring that would cost, cost to kind of do a few upgrades to, to make it usable or continue to be usable? Because if you just leave it be as is, my guess is it's going to go to the wayside and, and it's an asset that diminishes really quickly.
Yeah, so if we're looking at turning it into a middle school facility to be used, we're looking at about two million dollars to do that.
Now, that's not on this, right?
Correct, no, that would come from district funds.
I'm going to ask Commissioner Johnson, he's really good at this, where would that money come from? Instead of asking Monty, I'll ask you.
We have, we have capital budgets.
Okay.
And it would come from our, from our operating capital. And we could also do some things with, we get what's called long-term facility maintenance, which is funding that we get for maintenance based upon the average age of your buildings. And so we get some funding through dollars that way as well, but it would more likely come from our operating capital. What we don't want to do is if the community says yes, just let that facility go to waste, right? The other thing I didn't share with you is why we're looking at moving this over to the high school. Spring of the year, we have tracks, so all the high school kids go over there. And if the weather's inclement, they go practice in the gyms, okay? Guess what happens to our middle school kids who are supposed to be utilizing that space? Okay, they get bounced out. Now, we built a multipurpose space and it opened up about a year ago and that has helped a little bit with that, but we still have kids that will miss two, three days a week practice time because the high school kids are in there utilizing that space. So we'd like to be able to give the middle school back to the middle school kids, excuse me, this time of the year, there seems to be a few bugs floating around, I've got one of them. So it would, it would really allow us to, to let the middle school kids have the facility that they, that they deserve as well.
Mr. Chair, one last comment, just to pour a little salt in Commissioner Kapinski's wound, and of course, I'm a little biased, but one of the best things the Foley School District did back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine was build our field house. And fortunately for us, we did that whole project for seven hundred and fifty bucks a foot, finished. And so of course, that facility's been utilized like crazy. Our biggest challenge was that the public, at that time, thought we were using that as a varsity event facility and that was never the plan. You know, high school basketball was going to be in the high school gym.
Yeah.
But as you're well aware, it's been an extremely successful project and I can't believe we're thirty years in already.
Right.
And, and, and that's, and that's the piece, our outdoor activity complex, the high school moved there in two thousand, that was phase one. Phase two was to move the activity complex over. We're twenty-one years later and it hasn't happened yet, right? And that facility at the, at the now middle school, it's over thirty years old. And when the, our activities director, Mr. Klopak, he talked about when it was built in the early nineties, nineteen ninety-one, it was great. We, we had a hundred and fifty kids in a grade. We now have three twenty-five to three fifty in a grade at the secondary level and it just, it doesn't work. We spend six thousand dollars a year just moving bleachers around between the two facilities so that we can have some bleachers for our fans to be able to walk.
I need to correct my comment, with seven hundred and fifty yards of concrete, it was forty-two dollars a square foot to build the facility.
I would love to be able to build a facility.
Of course, that's not going to happen now, but.
Yep, absolutely.
No. So that's my salt there.
Okay.
One, one more, or one more comment. We definitely understand the cost of renovating as we are talking about that here and it's astronomical.
It's insane.
It's insane on what it costs to renovate and you lose space because of new codes and everything.
Correct.
With that, I, the opportunity to use the Sauk, or the Foley Field House and our sixth grade Sauk Rapids team beat Foley in the championship, so.
Bradley promised we'll quit answering.
Yeah, that's all we have.
I, I enjoy this kind of communication. So again, thank you for the opportunity to be here. If you have any other questions, you go where I'm at, give me a call. If people have questions, send them my way, I'd be more than happy to try and answer any questions. And I really, really want to encourage people to look at our website. It is, it's got a plethora of information, we're constantly adding things to it. It, I've talked about the tax calculator, it's got the Poll Finder on there, it's got both of the questions, it's got the renderings on there, it's got the videos on there. It's just, there's a ton of information for people.
Before you go, Brad, Tim's got a question, then I got one last comment for you.
Okay, I got some follow-up for you, Brad. Okay, let's go back to the Rice example that you mentioned on the five hundred and twenty thousand. Now, they're paying three oh three with the high school debt.
Correct.
Okay, that comes off, then if it won't pass, it's three ten.
Three ten, that's correct.
Is it three ten for the twenty-five years?
Three, three hundred and ten dollars per year for the entire, for the entire twenty-five years.
Okay, thank you. Other follow-up, you're February with the referendum, if both questions go down by statute, what other months can you come back to the public? I know there's set months in a year, could you give us?
Yeah, so when you, the state of Minnesota and the legislature has said, when to bond, you can only go five times a year. It is February, April, May, August, and November are the, are the only times that you can have a bond. If you choose to levy, you can only do that in November.
One comment I had is I was at an activities, not in, not in the Sauk Rapids School District and we were talking about this because there was people there that had land within Sauk Rapids. And one of the people said, well, if Sauk Rapids don't get a new football field, other schools are not going to come to play in pretty quick.
Well, first of all, I want to, I've had people say that to me.
Okay.
Okay, and number one, we're not building a football field, okay? We're building an activity complex. That, yes, the football team will be utilizing, but so will soccer, so will lacrosse, so will marching band, so will fall dance, so will our FIED classes. If, if we're building a football stadium, then we might as well go to Texas, okay? Because, and that's not what we're going to do. And will teams stop playing us? No, no, that, that won't happen. But I do know this, I do know that our complex and what we have to offer our students for a facility compared to what, we're in the Central Lakes Conference and what other schools have, ours is, is pretty dismal, right? And something needs to be done with it, okay? And it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to invest more money than it would cost for us to build a new facility to get that up to code and you'd have less space that's available. And we still have kids that would have to drive over to the middle school. And we will, we still have some activities. Baseball's gotta go uh to Bob Cross and the hockey has to go out to Hockey Arena East. But if 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 the legislature gave us the dollars to build some of those features in our facilities, would I be willing to do that? Yeah, if they give me the money, uh, so our kids don't have to travel. If you've eh if you've ever been at Soccer Rapids Rice High School, when school lets out and they're going out onto Osaka and eventually out onto Mayhew Lake Road, it is a, it is a superintendent nightmare because it, there's all kinds of traffic there, right? And we've, we've had this conversation before as well. So I I would all share is that, that no, they won't stop playing us. Uh, but I know they don't enjoy coming there. And here's the deal, right? Is that the current facility, we have to be very careful with who utilizes it.
Right.
Because if it gets, if it's too rainy and we have too many events on it, the field gets wrecked. And I know this much, I know when the football team uses it and then the soccer team goes to use it and the soccer ball is bouncing across the field when they try to roll it, uh, I know they don't appreciate that very much. So, yeah, no, nobody's gonna stop playing us, but it it is.
It was, they were former Soccer Rapids graduates and they go, well, we've been there and if they don't do something. The other thing you might wanna uh consider is that I bet if Commissioner Kapinski donated the money for that, you'd put his name on the field. Uh, Mr. Chair, I said the bantering was over for now.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great information.
Yep. Culture team update?
Mrs. Chair, I believe Christie Whiting is here as representative of the culture team for an update.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Christie Whiting and I'm representing the Relationships and Connections Subcommittee of the Benton County Culture Team. I'm just gonna give you a brief overview of what we've been working on. Uh, we've been working with IT to create a page on the internet that explains what the culture team is, what each subcommittee does, and what we're working on. This is where employees will also be able to reach out to the relationships committee with any concerns, questions, or feedback. We're also working on obtaining more communication between each department and have created a Department of the Month activity for each department to sign up and have an open house type activity. The goal with this is for Benton County employees to learn more about what each department does on a day-to-day basis. We're also working on ideas for a summer picnic and Christmas get-together for more informal relationship building. That's all I have.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for her?
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Consider Region Seven W Transportation Board Municipal Representation.
Mr. Chair, you have a letter in your packet from Mend asking for a replacement for uh former Foley Mayor Jack Bosch. And appears that uh we need someone who's uh either a mayor or a councilperson from outside the APO area to represent you at the APO Transportation Policy Board. So uh if if you, I wasn't necessarily expecting you to nominate someone or appoint someone today, maybe just get some discussion going and if you all wanna contact a mayor or a councilperson, or I certainly can do that for you. Just wanna get your thoughts on on where to go on this one. And Chris is here too, if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I think uh both with me being on the APO, I'm out and I think you're already on there, right?
I'm on the Seven W, yep.
Okay. How how far does the Seven W go?
Four, should be four counties.
Or is all of Benton County included?
Yes. Well, well, Seven East starts at the line though, right?
Yeah, true.
We have the western ends in APO.
Okay.
So, um, I guess my thought, Mr. Chair, would be we've had representation from the city of Foley. We have some of our other cities represented on APO.
Yep.
So would make some sense maybe to reach out to our current mayor, Foley, and ask if he's willing to serve. I can, would you like me to do that for you? How impressed you feel about that, but?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that.
So I heard, if I heard you correctly, the our, the new mayor for the city of Foley?
Yes.
Brandon. I'll start with Sarah and then go from there.
Brandon Voight, yep.
Okay, I will do that. See, if they're willing to serve, then we'll have that uh
Consider.
as a consent item in the future.
It it's it's in this area, really.
Yeah, absolutely. Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, I'm glad Chris is here to help me with this discussion.
New career ladders for highway engineer technician.
So, Mr. Chair, as you know, we've, we've had some struggles attracting, retaining engineering technicians. We know we have two positions that are currently vacant, potentially three uh would be vacant by the end of the month. That possibly could change, but we could have all three positions vacant by the end of the month. So, um, what we did is Chris and Mark Lloydelt and I uh spoke with Tessa Melvin, our DDA consultant, trying to brainstorm some ideas that to address this issue. So we, I think we identified, so what were the problems that we were seeing? We we felt in some instances, um, maybe our requirements at the entry level were too high. So there were applicants that they didn't really have much experience. They didn't have a degree. Uh, we couldn't offer them a position. We also heard from some of the folks that have left that the the ability to get promoted took a long time. They were kinda stalled out at the entry level position for a long time. And one of the reasons is, so we had, we have two positions currently. There's an entry one and there's a senior. The senior requires a person to be a bridge inspector and that takes a few years to get that certification. So the the bar was pretty high to move from entry to senior. So people felt they were stalled out for a long time. Also too, we felt our top-end salary wasn't competitive enough. As we know, these folks can be attracted by uh private engineering firms who can compensate pretty well. So we felt we need to be more competitive on the top end. So, Mr. Chair, I I would direct you, if we could, to, it's the, it's the second page in the packet. What I tried to do is very quickly summarize where do we have now versus this new proposed career ladder? You can see at the top, you've got engineering tech and senior at grade seven and nine. Uh, both require an associate's degree. And then uh the entry level position requires the person to obtain some basic Mendot certifications within a year. The big issue again with the second with the senior is including bridge safety within two years of hire. So uh that, again, people kinda stall out on on that one. It takes a while to move to senior. So then you jump, you jump down to the bottom. You can see now we're proposing engineering tech one, two, three, four, five, and then senior. And one of the keys, if I can point out, Mr. Chair, on the the engineering tech one, you can see it goes from associates to a high school degree. So basically, you know, no, no, no degree, uh, and no experience. So that's really a very entry-level training position, very entry-level training. And then as you go through the grades, the notches just tend to move up in terms of the degree, the experience, the certifications. They just move up in small increments as you move through tech two, three, four, and then senior. Finally, again, the senior is the one that you'd expect to have what's called Bridge Inspection Team Lead. And uh I I was looking on the Mendot, Mendot website in in terms of what's required there. Um, I believe it's four or five years of bridge inspection experience. Chris, can you come on up?
Four years.
Right. So that's, that's a pretty high standard uh to have to get the bridge inspection team lead. So that's kinda the big picture, Mr. Chair, was trying to lower the bar for folks to join us with with really not much in terms of a degree of experience. But then also, once they're here, give them an opportunity to progress quicker. And hopefully, again, that's the issue of retention. If someone can progress quicker, hopefully they'll stay longer. And also too, the 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 ceiling has been raised to be more competitive with private engineering and other organizations. So that's really the big, big, big picture, Mr. Chair, and uh we're hoping we can try something different to change our outcomes.
Chris, anything you wanted to throw in?
Go ahead and add, please.
I think a couple of you commissioners heard the presentation at the EMC conference back in December. This is something that a lot of highway departments across the state are looking at. They're just, the the experienced quality applicants are not out there. They're, they're all retiring just like every other sector and industry. So I think we've come to the realization, we need to lower our our beginning standards and just be prepared to hire somebody based on attitude, not necessarily skills, and train them in-house. So that is gonna be increased burden on us supervisors and managers, but I think that's the reality of the industry that that we're in right now.
Mr. Chair, uh, Chris, the certifications that are talked about from Mendot through here, is that something the county provides to the employee or is the employee paying for that or how does that work?
No, it's, we budget every year for for training.
And all these different certification levels?
Yep, mm-hmm. So that's something that we would pay. Um, a lot of them are at the the Mendot training facility in Arden Hills. Uh, some of them are uh uh Superior Technical College up in Duluth. But yeah, it's in our budget to to pay for the class and if an overnight stay is required, we would, we would pay for that as well.
And if I understood Monty correctly, we, two positions are open, possibly a third one of the three.
Correct. We just recently received a resignation notice from our final.
Is there any way of turning that back around or not?
Um, this, so if this goes through today, that current individual, we could move them up to a higher grade based on their current qualifications. They're not at the top, but now that we have some intermediate steps between the the entry level and the top, we could move that individual to a higher level, um, as early as tomorrow if it's approved.
I think to Miss Commissioner Kapinski's point is we've had those discussions at our cows about this whole process of ladders and, you know, rec- going through the process, uh, roughly a third of the employees every year to update things. So it just kinda falls into what we've been talking about. I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah.
We gotta do something.
Gotta, yeah, we gotta fix, we gotta fix the problem. We can see that. Um, do we get a, I mean, we don't get a lot of grade seven applications right now, do we?
Um, well, I see on paper to us as as interviewers and managers, um, they are probably that grade seven, but they they think that they're they're higher just because of the the industry um demands. And and what we've learned to, the Highway Department County, Highway Department across the state, a senior-level technician has a different uh qualification, a different explanation. We received some that was a senior in their county, but then they didn't meet our our senior mostly because of that bridge inspection. That's, that's something like Monty alluded to. Takes four years of actually ins- inspecting our bridges out in the field. And then you have to take a proficiency exam with with a a Mendot person to make sure that you know how to inspect bridges.
Do we get, my second question, do we get a lot of people that apply that have two years or, you know, six years or with no degree?
Um, currently, we 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 would not get any applications. I guess we wouldn't see any application with no degree cause I think that was a minimum qualification before that we wanted a two-year uh
Degree.
two-year associate's degree.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, and Chris, you felt it was important to have that that bridge inspection opportunity there, certification versus going out, contracting that part out? I mean, I'm hearing it a little, eh, that it's a little bit of a hurdle.
Yeah.
So that's still a important part to get to that senior level?
I I think um long-term, if we have some people in-house, cause there's things that we have to do on short notice. There's certain rain events. We've got bridges that um during certain rain events, if the flow is high enough, we we're supposed to go out and inspect that bridge within twenty-four hours. So something in that case, we would not be able to get a consultant on board that quickly unless we had them on retainer.
Yep.
Um, I think long-term, if we had more people trained in-house, that would be beneficial.
Thank you.
So then we go back to the age-old questions. If we help them get all this certification, can they find a job at a higher pay for private?
Potentially.
Industry.
Potentially, sure, yeah. That's always a reality.
But we would have them for up to X number of years by the time they got that. I mean, you know, we know we're a training ground.
Can be, yeah.
Yeah.
To that point, just the beginning of this month, um, we're fortunate, St. Cloud Technical College has a great program, their two-year program. The reality of it is they're, they're graduating twenty to twenty-five students every year and they're coming out with multiple job offers. We were informed at the beginning of this month, Dakota County Technical College, which has a very good program as well, very similar to St. Cloud Tech, they didn't have a professor and was at risk of canceling their classes this semester because they didn't have any instructors. So it's just another thing of the industry. The instructors that are doing that now, now are starting to get picked off by consultants because they're qualified, they're um, a- and it's, it's kinda like a death spiral. We're not able to train enough new young people into the industry because the the programs are disappearing due to lack of instructors, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is just uh eh with with the amount of work we got coming up in the next couple of years is a very scary situation, cause we had this conversation when we talked about adding that third one back in, how much of that work by adding a third back in, we could take on as a county to help pay for that. And and what, and vice versa, what you end up paying out to a contractor for that same amount of work is all, he, you get a lot less work done.
Yeah.
And that's, it's scary.
It is. It's. Mr. Chair, and and I, again, going back to our discussions, we, you know, we obviously don't have just an open checkbook to pay whatever you gotta pay, but we've always had the discussion of wanting to pay our employees the best that we can afford to, you know, and we've gotta address some of that.
We gotta address some of that. You know, the only problem is that we gotta address it where the needs are.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we don't want the domino effect.
And I understand that and that's why I emphasize we don't just have an open checkbook and just pay whatever, but at some point, we have to address some of these issues.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yes.
So I did some math figures from seven to nine and we're talking uh uh on the low range of a seven, uh, grade seven and on the low range of a grade eleven, there's a six dollar and thirty, and forty-two cent an hour difference between the top and the bottom. And I too, Chris and I have had conversations about this when I was over at the Highway Department. Um, a- and and I think that, and you have it in there, cause I read it, but mentoring at the top level to the bottom level is gonna help secure some of those, come, cause coming from the private sector, if you've got somebody in that higher level that's going to take the time and the effort to actually mentor some of these lower ones, I'm sorry, but that gets out to the public and they say, oh, hey, Benton County is willing to work with us and we're starting at this lower level position, but we have the opportunity to move up and the senior level position's helping us to do that. Um, and I think that just gives a a better picture of of how we work within the county.
That's an excellent point. That's kinda how I see it too. It's like somebody may come to us and we say, well, we we don't think that you're at the top level, but but here's how we're gonna get you there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's always a risk that we become a training ground, but I think we see the benefit. If if we're training them for four or five years, hopefully we have that good employee for four or five years as as well. So, um, and then maybe at the end of that, they see some, some benefit of having that mentoring and training and maybe we build some loyalty with employees as well.
Um, thanks Pam for the numbers. So do you think that six dollars an hour more between grade seven and grade eleven is enough to maintain or to keep or to attract?
Um, Mr. Chair, we rely heavily upon our consultant, Tessa.
Says yes.
As she, as she understands the market to recommend these pay grades. So uh I guess to answer your question, I'll say yes because we're we're trusting that she's got good judgment on this issue.
It doesn't, to me personally, it don't seem like a lot of money, if you go through them process for.
It's twelve grand plus or minus.
Right, yeah.
Well, and on the top end, it's nine dollars and two cents.
Okay.
So if you're going all the way through the steps to the very end of the steps, then it becomes nine dollars and two cents from
Okay.
the five different steps.
I'm gonna tell you, whatever we agree to pay right now, if we have to sub this out, we're gonna be paying triple.
Triple, yeah.
And you'll see an agenda item that I have coming up next that's kinda with with real numbers, so.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, I have one more. Uh, obviously, our common goal here is that if we get these people, we retain these people, we have to do a lot less outside consulting.
Correct.
And we should be able to do this in-house.
Yeah, that's our goal.
That's the, that's the point.
You're, back to your gut feeling, can we, can we salvage on um potentially?
Um, I would, I would be hopeful, um, uh, that we could. We're already talking internally. Um, uh, fortunately for our department, we have an operator, engineer, and maintenance person that has a two-year degree that has helped us out in construction projects in the past. So we've already initiated conversations with that individual if he'd be willing to help out on the destruction inspection again. Um, uh, we've got a short window to talk to that person. At first, he wasn't open to it, but maybe as, as this becomes more of a reality, um, opinions and minds will change.
Mm-hmm. I I'm, I'll tell you this, I'm supportive of it.
Yep.
Are you looking for a motion or?
Yes, sir, just a motion to approve this new proposed career ladder system for highway engineering technicians.
I'll move, I'll move for that.
I'll second.
We got three seconds.
Got it, Beth?
Yeah.
Pick, pick your second, Beth.
Any other discussion? Harry Nell will call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Thank you for you guys doing this too. It's very important.
Yep. Okay, um, now we have the resolution, the added agenda item.
Mr. Chair, I think we were, the next time was the BEP funding?
Oh, okay.
I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Chair, uh, for that discussion.
So Benton County, we we request a possible allocation to Benton Economic Partnership for twenty twenty-five. Um, basically, I think everybody here knows about all the work that has been done through BEP from the housing and everything else that we've done. And I I think it's under the understanding that we allocate uh a little more money for them for twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair? I I completely agree. I think, I think BEP, everything they do for the county, um, eh, they take on everything we ask and and I I couldn't be more supportive of them.
I don't think they've turned down one thing that we've asked.
Nope.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to um allocate the additional funding to Benton County Benton Economic Partnership for twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
What would be that dollar amount, sir?
I think we discussed twenty thousand.
Twenty, okay. Uh, from board contingent.
Uh, from Board Contingency.
From Board Contingency Fund.
I'll, I'll amend mine to include that amount.
Who made the second?
There hasn't been one yet.
I made it.
You made the motion.
I don't think he moved, he just looked for a motion.
Oh, okay, I'll make that, uh, motion for twenty thousand.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made for second to, um, allocate twenty thousand additional funds to BEP partnership for twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair?
Maybe we can make this a note that it's not ongoing, this is just.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With your comment of not ongoing, I, I personally look at what BEP's been doing since I got on the board. I, I think we need to look at ways that we can grow that organization because they're paying for themselves.
Absolutely.
And the more, if we put in a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, my guess is, is the county's probably getting back a lot more, you know, over the course of the year on, on businesses coming in, uh, housing, you name it. They, they've taken on everything we ask, and we gotta figure out, one of the biggest things that came up, and I still remember this a couple of years ago when I was at one of the presentations, is coming up with a recruiter. Yeah, recruiting department out of BEP, I think that could help the county, it could help all the businesses in the area, try and attract and recruit people.
People, right.
Yep, so, the more we keep feeding this program, we're getting the money back.
Mm-hmm, the other part that I, I know when we see the membership and that, um, they're gonna make a little more effort in this coming year to, for more membership, they have, they have all the leads, it's just that we haven't had the ability until we hired Pam to go after some of this membership, and it looks like it's gonna be pretty successful, we've, you know, it seems like every month we're adding one or two new members, granted, we're dropping one off now and then, and either the business failed or they moved out of the area.
And Mr. Chair too, and, and you'll hear later under Commissioner comments, but you know, the startup and the process of business retention, expansion, I mean, I was at two of them last week myself, just here.
Yeah.
So, that process is continuing also, so, anyways.
Any other comments? I'm good, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Well, and then, and this, next is your amended item, it was the, the resolution regarding the legislature attendance at the, uh, legislature.
Okay, I think Monte had it.
I'll turn it over to you all for discussion.
Yeah, we'll open it for discussion. Um, if you've seen it and, and read it, um, guess we'd like comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to start.
Okay.
And I might be a little bit here, but, uh, I am appalled by what is going on with the legislature right now. I think, uh, I, I, we're, we don't support color in our, i- in, in our positions, because we have to work with both sides in order to get our county program funding and everything like that. And when one side, I don't care if it's, if, i- i- if it's red, blue, white, whatever it is, we, I would be going this way no matter which side was doing it. Because it's that important, we can't get our work done at the legislature in the timeframe that are given, let alone when people choose to grandstand and, and not show up for work because of one seat. Um, at the end of the day, i- i- they need to be there. Um, it's not just one person, a local person, it's the whole party that has chosen not to be there. Um, furthermore, that party that is in this, um, situation, supported a person that didn't live in the district. Not only did that create this issue, it created a bear of, of, of burden on the local taxpayers for a special election, and we all know what that special election costs, it's a lot of money. To me, if a party like that does that again, they should bear that cost for a special election, or it should go to the next leading vote getter, uh, so we don't have these issues. Um, if you don't know where you live,
You shouldn't be.
You shouldn't be running. Uh, it, it, it is so sickening to see this happening, and, and this could be a very long time of this going on. We've been, had two years without bonding, there's a lot of, lot of counties that are looking at getting things done, and we're sitting here at a stalemate right now.
Yep. And this is, uh, there was some language in there that, um, Monte and myself had withdrawn because we didn't want to mention names or anything like that in here. Um, the other part that, uh, when I had a conversation with Commissioner Schultz or Representative Schultz was that, uh, I kind of expressed to him that I thought both parties could have worked this out a little better than, you know, um, trying to put the blame on one party or the other, because they had an agreement, they know where this is going.
Well, and to your point, Commissioner Pop, the Senate figured out a way to do it.
Yes.
So.
So, um, I think.
In all actuality, what, what you just said there, Commissioner Pop, Mr. Chair, is weird that everybody just assumes that that seat is gonna go Democratic.
Yeah.
It just, i- isn't that why they play the game?
Right.
You never know who's gonna win, right?
Who's gonna win, there's always that big upset.
Exactly, and, and that assumption is just insane.
Well, and to your point, Commissioner Kabinsky, is at the end of the day, we are the long arm of the state, right? So, however this all ends up upside down, I mean, the governor's already proposed budget is to, uh, uh, slide over two hundred million to the counties in the next, I mean, that's just his budget proposal, I understand they're not there yet, but they're already talking about shifting that responsibility, two hundred million to the counties, that, that's an automatic property tax increase. If that happens.
And while we were just in this meeting, there was another email that just came over, so I wonder what that, what that reads, so.
Um, is there anything in here that any of you have issues with?
You know, I, the, the local representation is one thing. Um, we've, we've gotta work with, like I said earlier, we've gotta work with all these people. And, and I don't wanna call out one person for their whole party, but I think what the local, I'll, I'll say taxpayers need to, need to understand, is there is representation from that party in our area. You know, and I would be calling out the other side if they were doing this, one hundred percent. Because we need to work with both sides, we need to, we need to get our projects through the, through the finish line on, with both sides of them. And this is not helping anybody out right now.
Okay. I, I a hundred percent agree with what you're saying, um, and I agree, I don't care what side it is. Ultimately, it's taxpayer dollars that are paying their wages, and if they're not going to show up to work, that's a disgrace. It's, it, it's just wrong.
M- Mr. Chair, I, I realize that this resolution obviously becomes part of the record of our minutes here, but does it make some sense to have somebody read it? It's a one-pager, I mean.
Oh, you mean, like now?
Like now.
Okay, um, one more comment that I got, Monte, I don't know, or, or Commissioner Kabinsky, you might hear this on Friday, um, because there's more than, more than our county that's done this, um, AMC may take a stand on this. You know, at their meeting on Friday.
Didn't they should?
Well, and, and I think the Supreme Court already, uh, come down a little bit on, on governor for, for jumping,
Jumping it.
Jumping the gun on it, you know, I, I think that, I think this is a reaction to the initial action by a governor, and, uh, two wrongs don't make a right here.
Okay.
This needs to be, this needs to be, they need to get back to work. At whether, at, at the end of the day, if everybody's so confident that that seat is gonna be Democratic, it's gonna be tied anyway, and they're gonna have to come back together and work at that point, how much can get done in a matter of a month, a month and a half, I'll witness.
Yeah.
But they're losing all of the, the preparation time.
The last date I saw is potentially March fifth.
Yep.
Is that what the next?
Yeah.
So, what's your wishes with this, you want it read?
I'm happy to read it. I, I just, I think it's important enough and it should be read, it's in our record, but obviously, we can hear what the resolution is.
Yeah.
All right, it's the Benton County Board of Commissioners' resolution, we'll assign a number to it. Whereas Representatives Dan Wogomont, Tim O'Driscoll, and Isaac Schultz are the duly elected members of the Minnesota House of Representatives representing Benton County, and whereas it is the duty of duly elected members of the House of Representatives to represent their constituents on the floor of the House and engage in legislative work as required by their office, and whereas Minnesota Statute three dot zero five states that at noon of the day appointed for convening of the legislature, the members shall meet in their respective chambers, as each is called, the persons claiming to be members from each shall present their certificates to be filed. All whose certificates are so presented shall then stand and be sworn. And whereas Article Four, Section Eight of the Minnesota Constitution states that each member and officer of the legislature before entering upon his duties shall take an oath or affirmation to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and to discharge faithfully the duties of his office to the best of his judgment and ability. And whereas the first week of a legislative session is critical for setting the agenda, introducing legislation, and ensuring the priorities of Benton County residents are represented in state government. And whereas the absence of any elected representative during the first week of session is a dereliction of their duties and deprives Benton County residents of their voice in critical early legislative deliberations. And whereas the lack of participation in legislative proceedings undermines the democratic process and erodes public trust in the ability of these representatives to fulfill their obligations. Be it resolved that the Benton County Board calls upon these representatives to uphold their responsibilities by ensuring they are present and actively engaged in future legislative sessions, and be it finally resolved that the Benton County Board affirms its commitment to holding all elected officials accountable to the constituents they serve.
Okay, you heard the, the resolution?
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve and have the county board chair sign it?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, one more comment, isn't the Senate in the same situation and they're all at work?
Yeah, that's my point, is they've figured out a way to make.
They, y- this is ridiculous, so.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, carried.
Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Uh, Sandy Showbird, Human Services Director.
Um, on the agenda today is a contract with Lutheran Social Services for guardianship services. Uh, we currently have contracts with a couple of other agencies for this, it's the same contract, we have other, with other organizations. Um, just giving us more vendors to work with, we also work with, just a note, we work with Stearns County on these contracts. So, we have a unified rate, um, between the two counties for all of our vendors at this point in time.
Mr. Chair, under, uh, Sandy, under your source of funds, you talked about client funding, adult protection grant, county funding. Uh, can you talk to me a little bit about the client funding, I mean, how does that work and maybe what the percent or dollars might be of that, I have a feeling it's minimal, but, and I'm not asking for an exact.
No, and it, it kind of depends on the situation, so, and it depends on their income, so many of the people who become guardians don't have funding, um, and they come in through the Vulnerable Adult Act. But there are occasions when an individual does have money and they have no family willing to set, step forward and become a guardian, and then they may end up paying a fee towards a guardian to
Okay.
take care of their needs.
And of that particular funding, do you have an approximate number, what percentage might be levy?
Most of it's levy.
Okay.
Most of it. All right. Any other questions? Your wishes?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion's been made to, and seconded to approve the contract for, contract for the purchase of guardian conservatorship services with Lutheran service, service, Lutheran social services of central Minnesota.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Rust Bird.
All right, this goes right along with what we were talking about earlier. Uh, what I have before you is a consultant contract to provide construction inspection services for the replacement of two bridges. And I was gonna bring up this map just to recall everybody, so, we receive federal money to replace uh, the bridge on Cassa twenty-two over the west branch of the Rum River, and we receive federal money to replace this bridge over, um, the Saint Francis River on fifty-one here. So, we reached out to a couple consultants, received two responses back. Um, we believe Ericsson Engineering is going to provide the best value overall to provide this construction inspection. And so, I'm asking the board to consider entering into an agreement with Ericsson Engineering to provide construction inspection services. Now, the dollars and cents, to inspect one bridge, uh, the bridge on Cassa twenty-two, the total estimated fee is a hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, to inspect, oh, do I have that, I think I might have that reversed, um, this one might be fifty-one. To inspect, uh, the other bridge, Cassa twenty-two, is about a hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and forty dollars. So, when we're talking about, uh, having in-house inspection versus outside inspection, this is, this is really what it is. Um, to do inspection on a bridge, you need to have these certifications, there's a bridge construction certification that's required. We don't have anybody in-house, both of these can, will be constructed this year, so when you look at these, we're spending two hundred and sixty thousand dollars just in one summer to construct two bridges. And this is gonna be a challenge in the upcoming year. When you think about Benton County, we have a hundred and twelve structures in our state that's considered a bridge. Even if they were designed to last a hundred years, we really should be replacing a bridge structure, uh, every year forever, so, um, that's one every year for a hundred years, by the time we replace all of them, we'll go right back to the first one we replaced and replace that if it's a hundred years later. So, um, kind of the dichotomy of the board today, we get to see a proposal to do some changes with their engineering and technician position, but in the meantime, we, we have these services that are needed, and this is the real cost of doing that.
Mr. Chair, Chris, so, uh, to your point on dollars, here, just for example, the one that's in front of us now, you're showing seven hundred and twenty-four hours of construction observation, so one person at forty hours a week, there's gonna be somebody there for eighteen weeks observing the construction.
I think that's on the high end, but, uh, yeah, when you talk about, because these two structures, they're not box culverts, these are actual bridge structures, so there'll be removal of the existing structure, there'll be grading, there'll be, uh, steel piling being instructed, there'll be concrete work, there'll be setting of beams, there'll be paving, so.
But even if that's a high number, they're proposing that they're gonna have somebody onsite for eighteen weeks, forty hours a week.
Yeah, a- and really, it's probably more like twelve weeks, it's sixty to seventy hours a week.
Okay.
It's probably more realistic.
And back to our discussion earlier about a senior position, would that senior position and the requirements that we're asking be able to do this work?
Eventually, we would like to have somebody, yeah, that has these qualifications that could do this in-house.
We'd do that a little cheaper than two hundred and fifty-six grand.
I'm not a mathematician here, but I'm looking at going, we could offer somebody a heck of a job and have them come in here and do these two bridges, plus, all the bridges we got coming up for years to come and be money ahead.
Yeah, because in, in twenty twenty-six, we have two more structures, um, uh, that will need to be replaced as well, so.
But in government, we're not allowed to do this.
Right.
Right.
Save money for taxpayers.
Well, so, the system doesn't allow us to pay somebody, I mean, if, if, personally, if I could pay somebody two hundred thousand and put fifty-six thousand in my pocket, I would do it, right?
Yeah.
But the system doesn't allow us to do that.
Chris, how does the, the bridge funding operate, because you're dealing with Cassa twenty-two and you're dealing with County fifty-one?
Yes.
And, and your funds of, you know, the estimated costs here, sources of funds are levy, so, Cassa twenty-two, no different because there's Cassa funding towards it.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, currently, we, we could, there is an allowance to use some of our Cassa construction dollars towards engineering, uh, of those projects. Would be design work and construction inspection, currently, we, we don't do that because, um, the more you use for engineering, the less you have for available doing the roads.
Sure.
Um, County Road fifty-one, so, as we know, it's not a Cassa road, the only sources of funding would be local sources, sales tax or, or wheelage tax or levy. These, both of these bridges combined, we received about one point two million dollars of federal bridge replacement money to replace these. Um, combined, that was, that's about fifty percent, about fifty-one percent of the project costs for both of them is covered by the federal money, so, a little over two million dollars, yeah, we're spending about ten percent of that, uh, just on inspection costs, so. We would like to think that we could inspect that, maybe six to seven percent of the construction costs, so, um.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, my mind is going right now in a business, um, mentality.
Yeah.
And about starting a business, because I look at it this way, you could go hire somebody for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, pay the taxes, pay the insurance, pay everything, you're still coming away with fifty grand.
Right.
And the, the individual's happier than heck.
Right.
When are we going into business?
And Mr. Chair, this is one project.
This is one project, one.
Well, two, actually, two projects on one thing, but.
To your point, we got two more next year.
Right.
Okay, but, but more importantly.
Okay, but more importantly, this is 12 weeks. There's 52 weeks in a year.
Yeah. Correct.
Right.
I'm in the wrong business being a commissioner, I can tell you that. It's insane what we're.
That's the demand of these individuals, and where we're losing out.
The only thing I'll add, Erickson was the one that did the design work on the bridge, so that's why we feel like they provide the best value overall. They'll have all the design information to help with inspection, but you're right, that's the reality of the industry right now. Obviously, their employee that's out there, he's not, doesn't see 105 or 160 on his paycheck, but that's, you're right, that's going to the company's overhead and things like that, so.
What were some of the other quotes you remember off the top of your head?
Yeah, we had one other consultant, WSB. They were about 180,000 per bridge, so they were.
This one's almost 100 grand less.
Yeah, so.
How much was the design on these?
Um, these two bridges, inspection, I think, we're, I think, the market, we're about three years after we did the design contract. It was about $50,000 a bridge just to design the bridge, so. So, you're right, bridge replacement, we're probably, if we had to do it at 100% in-house, we're probably 200 to 250,000 for design and construction inspection.
And what's the total cost of that bridge?
Um, one bridge alone is about 1.1 million dollars.
We're paying 20% just on inspections and design, 25, holy moly.
And.
You're in the wrong business.
Oh, yeah, that's typical, I think, for whether it's a road reconstruction or a bridge project. I think 20, 25% maybe on the high end, you know, 15% would be on the low end if you had to consult it out, so.
Just think though, how the system is, I mean, the feds are dumping 50% of it in here, taxpayer dollars.
You mean, we are?
Yes.
Yeah, basically, we are.
We are, yes.
Chris, question on the bridge, on that one in 51, is that the one that goes across the road diagonally?
No.
No?
No, this one is just west of County Road 6, southeast of Foley here.
Miles, me and three-quarter mile east.
Okay.
And 22 is just west of the rolled Rum Shack.
Yep, exactly right, so.
Wow.
Yeah, the one on 7 is built the same timeframe, so it's not next year, but I think within the next five years, as we continue to inspect it and it continues to deteriorate, it may become eligible for bridge funding.
One on 7 just south of Rum Shack you're talking about?
Yeah, they were both built about one year apart from each other.
That's where the river kind of goes through at an angle there.
Well, there's one on 51, too, where, doesn't it go this way, you know, what's 51 and... It's quite a ways out there, though.
Hmm, yeah.
We got ditch nine or something goes through there.
Oh, corner of 51 and 7, yeah, that was culverts.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, yep.
They ditched angles, at an angle through there, yes.
Yep, that's part of the Cassa 7 project.
Well, we don't have a lot of choices here.
No, I think we need to start a bridge engineering and go along with Sir Stripe a Lot.
Yes, sir.
And we got a heck of a business, so.
Sir Stripe a Lot.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Did you have, okay, motion's been made and seconded, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, taking a look at these numbers, and I didn't do the full math, but looking in my head, we could probably hire three employees, train them and everything for that amount of money.
Yeah, your brother.
Only thing I'll add, this was budgeted for this year. Actually, it is a little bit less. I was estimating about 145,000 per bridge, so it did come in a little bit under what I was budgeting, so.
Good.
That's a good thing, it was already accounted for in the levy increase and everything, so.
Okay. Motion's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Very good. Thank you, Chris.
That's all I have. Okay. I think before we go to Commissioner meeting updates, we're going to turn it over to, we'll do the Community Health Board, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Benoit.
All right, I'd like to call the Community Health Board meeting to order. Beth, did you want to do roll call?
Commissioner Benoit?
Yep.
Commissioner Heinon. Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
President.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Thank you.
And can I get approval or any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments today.
I move for approval, Madam Chair. Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you all laughing at me?
No. We're laughing at him.
I'm glad you said that, because I'd have probably said, "Mr. Chair," by accident.
Hey, I learned that a long time ago, I correct myself. We're confused right now.
Yes, you are.
All right, Madam Chair, we have a consent agenda item.
Oh, okay. Consent agenda item number one.
Move for approval, Madam Chair. Second.
Um, any discussion? We have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now Jacqueline.
Sure. So, the first item we have on the agenda today is for us to review our cannabis and substance use prevention agreement between the Department of Health and our Community Health Board. So, today, I would just be looking for a approval of that contract so that we can start charging the grant for the work in substance use prevention and cannabis.
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Um, any more discussion?
So, you hear a lot of talk about the cannabis stuff going on. You think it's ever going to, it's going to become reality sometime this year?
I think, you know, you mean as far as like the operations and that side of things? Yeah, I think that piece of it, you know, is one thing. I think the reality of the use is another thing. We're seeing the impacts in public health already, especially with the lower potency hemp edibles, which is not something we've addressed yet in our ordinances. I was just talking with Wright County a couple of meetings ago, a couple, not last week, but the week before, and they had done some store audits, and I don't want to misquote, but it was, I mean, majority of their stores were already selling illegal products, and it was a mass amount. So, I think we're seeing it in public health, we're seeing some of those issues already start to arise, and then, you know, some of the things we talked about, you know, the feeling that because it's now legal, that it's all 100% safe, you know, those kinds of assumptions from community, so, yeah, I think we're seeing the impacts, and then as far as like the fun, you know, the operations and all those sorts of things, yeah, I mean, that's coming up here pretty quickly, too.
Sounds like they're going to go back to the drawing board on it again.
Yeah, yeah. I think, yep, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Jacqueline, are you in the loop on where they're at with another executive director? I mean, I think we're on third one, at least.
I'm not in the loop, yeah. I mean, I can, I can look in to see, yeah.
Just wondering if you're.
But I haven't heard anything lately, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Weird, huh? Yeah, weird as.
Any more discussion? We have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 And, go ahead.
Yes, all right, so second item today, we have a unique opportunity this year, we have our Response Sustainability Grant, and within that Response Sustainability Grant, we had a meeting with the Minnesota Department of Health a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking with us about the upcoming National Association of County and City Health Officials. In that meeting, they had let us know that we would have approval to potentially send commissioners to attend the trainings as well. So, I'm here just asking if there would be any commissioner interest in attending. We can support up to two commissioners, we probably could do three if there was interest, but this would be a great opportunity. NACO, the National Association for City and, or County and City Health Officials, NACO is really where we get a lot of our capabilities set. If you recall, last year, our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator attended and worked with the Rural Group that was helping to define what the capabilities would be for each of the counties across the nation. And so, this year, we have opportunity, we're going to send our new public health supervisor, myself and our PEP coordinator, but wondering if commissioners would like to attend. Commissioner Heinon is a NACO member, because he's our Community Health Board Chair, so that was one person I was thinking potentially, but then I don't know, Commissioner Kapinski with like public safety work, this might be a really fitting environment. I mean, it's all about incident command, response, readiness, new protocols, provisions across the board, or, you know, anybody else who would want to attend as far as being new. So, throwing it out there to see if there would be interest, and then if so, we can work on getting connected with whoever that is and try to figure out details after that.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Commissioner Heinon did bring this up to me, and I was actually going to be bringing this up at AMC on Friday to find out if they're sending anybody down for this. Maybe this would be a, from what I understand, it's all paid for, right?
We have 100% grant funding to send, yeah, to send two commissioners, or even three. I just proposed two, but MDH was saying, you know, this is something that they were encouraging us to do, and then I'm like, I'll bring it forward, but we do have funding, yep, 100%.
I assume, Monty, excuse me, Madam Chair, I assume if we send three, that's, we've got an issue there.
I know we've always been really cautious about what we put on the calendar, but I think if you're going simply to get training, and that's it, and there's no necessary discussion of county business and decision-making occurring, I think you're fine.
Okay.
So, just going to train, I think you're good. It doesn't, there's not a quorum issue.
So, be an opportunity, to give you some context, it's really, a lot of the different sessions, similar to kind of how AMC works, a lot of update sessions, there'll be a lot of different exercise sessions, good opportunity to get more information, connect with a lot of those individuals throughout the states and the nation. We did also, just so you know, offer to our emergency manager, because usually we do try to fund trainings for Kristen when we can, it doesn't work for her schedule for this one, but I want to let you know that as well, because oftentimes, it's a time that we collaborate on plans and things like that as well.
I mean, I've been trying to learn more about public health, because I'm not, you know, Jacqueline knows, I'm not a big public health fan, but unless Jacqueline's going to come and help me plant corn, I cannot go. So, I get done by the 29th of April.
Wouldn't that be nice? Madam Chair, Jacqueline, when does this decision need to be made and who's attending?
Um, I think if we can get an idea of how many potentially, I think the idea is we want to try to get books, book hotels and flights and those things as we can, because it does fill up pretty quickly, and so that way, you can at least be at the same place that the summit's held at. We probably don't need names right away, but at least a ballpark, and then we could always cancel if needed, but at least we'd have approval to move forward and start coordinating.
Madam Chair, I have some interest, too. I can't commit today, though, and that's why I'm asking that question, so.
If the board wants to say how many we want to commit up to, then we can always wiggle with that.
You said you had money for?
We have enough funding, it would be, yeah, we've got 4,200, we'd have plenty of funding to be able to sustain. We received our Response Emergency Grant that goes through June of this year, and we have funds that we can use currently, so.
Could those funds be used for anything else, or is it pretty much?
Yep, yep, it's all for emergency preparedness and response, yep. Our response readiness is a huge chunk of that.
For myself, I have interest going if my schedule allows it, but I was going to see if AMC, with my chair position, has funding for that, so we don't have to take it out of our, and we can use our money for something else, so I'll find out that on Friday.
Okay.
I guess, Madam Chair, in my opinion, two, max of three commissioners, that's just my thought.
Right.
And I would be interested if Steve's not, or one of the others cannot go, that, I mean, being new on this board, I think what I can, the more I can learn, the better I am.
Sure, and maybe it makes some sense, maybe by the February 4th meeting, we could make a final decision on who's going. Is that appropriate?
Sure.
You'd have your information by then, and we could check our calendars, you know, and.
Well, this is February 20th, right?
End of April, April 29th.
Oh, April.
April 29th to May 2nd is what I have.
Yeah, yep, so I think the early bird deadline is at the end of either this month or next month, but I think it's only about $100 difference. I think it probably makes sense for us to.
Can you find out that and maybe let Monty know?
Yeah.
Because if we got the motion for up to three, I'll find out mine on Friday, we can, you know, Monty can get some questions.
My assumption would be Commissioner Heinon will go.
Yeah, I think so.
So, okay.
The other part that I, a little, I know it's funded, but I don't know, is there opportunities while you're there to aggressively seek more money for Benton County, or is it just?
Um, it's a good question. I mean, there are grant notices out there, and there's certainly private party in, you know, sectors that come to the summits and attend sessions or do the tabling. So, I mean, potentially, but it's more of a learning session, it's more directed towards, you know, one of the updates in emergency preparedness, readiness, response, the response capabilities, coordinating with those other health officials, local and city. So, it's a good question, Commissioner Pop, but I don't know how much of that happens in that space.
Well, my point being taken is, like, if it was coming out of commissioner contingency funds, then I probably would not be in favor, because I like to see that money being spent for large chunks of money that can come to Benton County.
Right.
You know, transportation and stuff like that, so that, that's why I ask.
All right.
Okay, so it sounds like we're saying up to potentially three.
We just need consensus on this, Jacqueline or Monty, or we, you need a motion, or?
Well, I know you have an interstate travel policy, which does require board consent for folks to travel out of state, so I would say a motion probably would be a good idea with this one.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to, for up to three commissioners to attend this conference. I'll second that.
All in favor, or, any more discussion on this? With the first and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so next agenda item, I was just going to offer up a department update, if we wanted to do that today. I know we're behind in schedule, so I'm open either way, we can do it the next one or we can do it today.
How about it, I think?
How long do you got?
It's cold out, maybe it's going to warm up.
I didn't practice, I don't know. It shouldn't be too terribly long. Monty, do I need to do anything to share the screen of those that may be on YouTube or online, or is it already set?
If you want to, yes, you want to do that?
Yeah, if you want to teach me, that'd be great.
Well, the folks, anyone who's watching YouTube can see it.
Oh, then we should be good, right?
Yeah, right, so they.
I didn't know if I had to do something for that.
No, that's only for GoTo, if you guys share a screen.
Okay, perfect. All right, so, let's get started here. So, because it is January, beginning of the year, I'm just going to do a quick little overview for our Public Health Department. Mission and vision, I know we've talked about this before, but really, our mission for Benton County Public Health is to empower the community and support a good culture of health and well-being. Our vision is optimal quality of life for all. So, some of the things that we talk about in public health a lot of the time is that really where we live should not determine the level of health protections that we have. Our Benton County Public Health Department works in partnership with the Minnesota Department of Health. The unique thing about the Minnesota Department of Health is that really they have really developed a system where the local public health departments can work together with the state to protect the health and safety across all of the state of Minnesota, but at the same time, the unique part of the Minnesota Department of Health is they allow local governments a lot of flexibility to determine how they meet those health needs. All of this is kind of outlined in our statute, Minnesota 145A, where all of our local and state health responsibilities are. So, this is a framework, I've shown you this probably multiple times last year, just bringing it back up again, because this is where we've now received foundational public health funding. So, this year, we received that funding called the Foundational Public Health Funds, and it outlines different capabilities and areas that we have to work in within public health departments. They use the analogy of a house when looking at this, so the bottom level, they talk about being the foundation of the public health departments, that middle level being rooms within a house, just like we have areas of public health, and then the top level being those community-specific things that we're working on. So, using that analogy, I'm just going to talk through this a little bit to help us kind of understand what that means for our Public Health Department when we're doing the foundational public health work. So, just like every house needs a very strong foundation, our health department needs a Um, so just like every strong, every house needs a very strong foundation, our health department needs a really strong foundation as well. Um, when we're talking about that foundation, this is including things like we have to assure we have staffing of our public health department, um, making sure that our staff are trained, and so that they can meet the demand of anything that were to arise. Um, talks about communication, so all of the different health education mechanisms we're doing. Um, as you guys know, a lot of our staff are out in community majority of the time, working with our school partners, community groups, organizations, nonprofits, working to help make health, um, the easy choice. So that's kind of the foundation piece, and so just like we have, um, our data surveillance, um, we're constantly monitoring the data for our community to determine what those health needs might be and doing our health surveys as well. And then we have the house, um, and rooms within a house, so just like you have rooms, a kitchen, bathroom, living room in your home, we have different buckets within public health that our staff work in. So we've got communicable disease control, um, chronic disease and injury prevention, environmental health, maternal child health, family health, um, and then access and link to care, to clinical care, which would be like the doctor's office, um, getting individuals in for their hearing and vision screenings, those sorts of things. And then, um, the cool thing about the Minnesota Department of Health is it also provides us some flexibility in some of our funding to be able to meet those local community needs that we have. So you think about, um, Benton County and what's unique to Benton County. Um, you know, we have a large rural farming population. We have that east side St. Cloud, or the western side of Benton County, where it's that more urban city environment. Um, so it allows us, just like you have in your own home, the ability to match your decor to what the needs are of your family, it allows us to match the needs of our public health department to what our community is. So a lot of the things that we work on, you know, when we talk about different policies, or when we're working with, um, I don't know, you know, Chris on, on, um, grant applications, or, you know, we're attending different committee meetings, we're always thinking about what those unique things are to Benton County that we want to make sure is in those policies, so that we can do everything we can to make an environment that people can thrive in, which is what we all want. And that's what MDH calls community-specific services. Um, so this is really just kind of breaking down that big framework that, you know, it's sometimes can be hard to understand in an easier way. In addition to those responsibilities, we also have six areas of public health responsibility that's outlined in our statute, um, and these are also, again, the things that we need to do, but we don't do them alone. Um, so this is just a big group of all the people that public health is out working with, um, just an idea and just a snapshot. So we work across different levels, whether it's, you know, the federal, um, local, state partners, regional partners. Um, we also work with individuals and communities. We work with specific zip codes, um, different nonprofits, organizations, community organizations, and so forth. So we're not always the doers, sometimes we're just the coordinator and the arranger and the collaborator, um, to help get resources to those different community groups, so that they can help work on the things that are gonna help our community. Um, or for example, I'll talk about some when I do, um, some more of our update here. So again, you know, we have to assure our, um, local health infrastructure, our community health board, um, is required to promote healthy communities and healthy behavior. It's really kind of the, the foundation of what we are, um, assuring that people can be healthy and wherever they live within our county. We prevent the spread of communicable disease, whether it's tuberculosis, hepatitis, COVID was a big one. Um, disease data surveillance constantly, we're always, we have a D P and C nurse who is up to date and monitoring different cases and outbreaks among our county. Then we have health alerts and advisories that we work with our, all of our clinic partners on, so we usually will get an alert um, from the Minnesota Department of Health of something that's, that's bubbling up. And then it's our responsibility within, we have timeframes, either we have an hour to respond or twenty-four hours, depending on if it's an alert or an advisory, and we have to get out to our doctors and our clinics and our pharmacies and our vets, uh, veterinarians and all different health sectors, um, to coordinate what that messaging is. Sometimes it's school partners, you know, be on the alert for this, and then you'll see, um, different notices come out through your healthcare system, or whoever that might be. Um, protection against environmental hazards, so we have a community health specialist with our foundational public health money who will be doing somewhat of our, um, environmental health, so that's when we're talking about clean drinking water. If there are cities that have wells that are contaminated, our public health department's coordinating with them. Um, lead follow-up, we have kiddos who have high lead levels, which impacts their, their development as a child, so we have nurses that reach out with them. Um, public health nuisances, so if you think about a home that has, um, a lot of different, um, you know, feces in the home, for example, um, from different animals and pets, it's following up with those homes and enforcing through a public health nuisance type of environment. And then you think about things like policy when it comes to environmental health, um, and air quality, so cannabis has been a big one lately, tobacco, other substances of abuse, um, but really thinking about that clean drinking water that you have every day, um, thinking about your air quality and thinking about those other provisions, that's public health, um, at work. And then, um, we have prepare and respond to emergencies, which is another part of statute, which we were kind of just talking about, so I won't go too much in depth on that one, but again, making sure that we have a staff and a workforce that could respond, um, at the moment that we need. And I'll talk about some of the different trainings we've done recently for that as well. And then the last one is just assuring health services. So we have a team of public health, community health specialists and nurses who work with, um, children and families that do family home visiting services that we've talked about in the past, but also we have individual community health specialists who work with connecting kids to getting, making sure they're getting their wellness screenings. So, um, you know, our child and teen checkups program, for example, getting kids linked to dental, vision, hearing, um, and their wellness checks, for example. So all of these are different areas that we carry out in order to meet the statute, and these are the six different, um, areas outlined in statute. Um, so I'll just jump into a couple of, cup, um, some public health updates, just to provide some additional context, and then also catch you up to what we've been working on over the past couple of months. Um, so just a staffing and recruitment update, um, so we are still recruiting for our public health nurse position. That public health nurse position will do our family home visiting program, our child and teen checkups program coordination, and then our WIC program. They'll spend about, um, forty percent of their time doing women's, infants, and children clinic appointments and visits. Um, so that, um, position, we've done two rounds of recruitment for, um, we do, um, hope to anticipate we'll get that filled soon, but, um, we'll see how time progresses here. We also will have an upcoming retirement, and we're, um, we're, it's bittersweet, um, we had a, an individual who's been with us for over twenty-four years, and so, well, of course, we're very happy for her, but we're also sad that we won't have her on our team anymore. Uh, we will be posting, um, that position as soon as we can, in order to start recruitment, because training for women, infants, and children clinic appointments is quite um, thorough and robust, and so we want to be able to allow them to have some time to cross over and get that training with the current worker and then the new worker. We'll also be recruiting for a temporary WIC position because of all the transition and the time it's taking for us to, um, get that public health nurse position filled, um, in order to cover the transition between the retirement and then bringing on two new people, um, that person to train. Um, so we're gonna look to see if we can also identify somebody that could do some temporary WIC coverage of our WIC clinics, so that we don't have any service interruption for our WIC clinics. Um, and I heard, you know, just like the other staffing conversations, it's been, um, a challenge in recruitment. All right, so just a couple of things that we've been working on, um, some of our public health staff, Mariah, Julie, Kayla, are members of the Sterns-Benton Towards Zero Death Coalition. Um, this works to reduce traffic crashes, injuries, and deaths in Minnesota on roads and streets. Um, just to give you a little bit of idea, so when you think about a traffic accident, do you often think about public health? Does anybody think about public health? Okay, so this is a good example, a good analogy that I sometimes use. Um, oftentimes, and you guys have this in your road plans, and I think, um, it, maybe it'll make an aha moment here for you, um, when you think about traffic accidents that occur, and oftentimes, let's say, a traffic accident occurs on the corner out here, and maybe we have five or six of them, right? All those people are gonna go into the hospital, they're gonna get evaluated, and they're gonna see what's wrong, and the doctor, the healthcare provider's gonna treat that individual. Where public health is different is if we hear there's five or six accidents in one location, then we're intervening to figure out why. Why are there five or six accidents in this location? What can we do from an environmental change, a systems change, to create a different way so that people are not getting injured from repetitive traffic accidents? So I know I've heard you talk about those things in some of your other plans, so a little plug to think about public health in those situations. Um, so our staff were over at Pleasant View Elementary School, um, working with the kiddos, um, with the coalition, the T Z D coalition, again, which their goal of the T Z D coalition is to reduce traffic crashes, injuries, and deaths. Um, and they partnered with the St. Cloud Area Planning Organization, the City of Sac Rapids, St. Cloud, and Pleasant View, and this was back in October, to hold Safety Town at the school. This is an activity for students to learn how to be responsible pedestrians, as well as to help understand how to navigate around about. And so this is an example, so basically what they do is they set up like a traffic course within the school. Um, this collaborative of partners, uh, provided safety education to approximately a hundred and twenty different third graders. Um, it works in relationship with our statewide health improvement partnerships, or our SHIP grant allows us to do this with our communities. This activity, um, also related to the demonstration project that was implemented back in May, twenty twenty-four, that Mariah was at the community health board presenting on, um, that had the temporary curb extensions as well. Um, so in addition to that, we also had, um, our staff, our T Z D staff and community health specialists attend the Towards, um, the Towards Zero Death back on October twenty-second and twenty-third, and this is where we get our updates for engineering. So when we think about like the roadway engineering, um, enforcement, education, emergency medical health services, um, and different approaches for how we can address traffic fatalities and injuries that are occurring from traffic safety. Um, so just an update on that, and then there's, there's, are a couple of other things like the Safe Route to Schools projects and things like that that you're more familiar with as well. Um, but really the goal of public health in these environments is to really figure out how do we make the environment a healthy place for everyone? Um, and traffic injuries includes that, and these pictures are from, um, Pleasant View Elementary School. So you can kind of see the demonstration project set up, and then, um, they had a little roundabout in there as well, which is pretty cool. All right, um, another thing that we worked on over the last couple of, of weeks or month since the last community health board meeting update, um, our staff provided, attended our incident command system training, um, and this is, is another one of those trainings that is for us to be prepared for emergency responses. In this, um, scenario, we had to exercise a hepatitis A outbreak, so hepatitis A is one of those serious liver diseases that can be caused, um, through lack of washing hands, through syringes, eating and drinking, you might hear it on the news sometimes, um, it's, it can be a serious liver disease. And so working through the incident command system, each of our staff were provided roles, so we had, um, incident commanders, we had, um, deputy planning chiefs, we had logistics chiefs and, and so forth, and we had to do, um, press conference release, we had to do update, um, we had to determine what our plan of response was going to be. And so our staff partake in these exercises, exercises quite routinely, and this training and exercise and education is all a part of us knowing what to do when we do get an outbreak and we do get a notice, so, um, this is just an example of that. Um, but really this helps to make sure that we are scalable and flexible, that we can respond to emergencies when they arise, that we can work with our emergency manager as needed to coordinate, um, that we can have good communication, and that we can make sure that we've got multi-agency coordination, and so thinking about who those partners would be that we'd be pulling into the response with us. Uh, let's see, we also, um, through our statewide health improvement partnership grant, so jumping from a different funding source now, um, we've been working with Fully Cross Center, so in September of twenty-three, um, in a collaboration with the University of Minnesota Extension, the foundational for essential needs, and the Fully Cross Center, our SHIP staff, our SHIP S H I P staff, um, helped the food shelf work towards becoming a super shelf, um, and worked through that transformation with them. A large walk-in cooler was replaced with several new individual mobile cooler, coolers with glass doors, which allows for available foods to be viewed by shoppers. They also installed some new LED lighting, um, to help with energy costs, the food shelf interior walls were painted, um. In addition, they were able, able to get some more fresh produce in there as well. Um, for the super shelf initiative, um, the Fully Cross Center will be working, um, further in order to, um, officially be certified this next winter and spring, and there was an article put out about this as well on the, the F F E N site, um, as well. Um, so this would be with our SHIP staff, so how this will impact community, of course, when we think about public health, again, if we hear that there's a lack of access to healthy foods, um, or allowing the space for people to have access to healthy foods, um, this is one of those components. And then as well as, um, in the past for the Cross Center, if any of you are familiar with the Cross Center, individuals would come in, um, in order to get food, and they would kind of just wait, and then the staff would go and, and select what foods they were gonna get, and then put them in a box and pass them out. Now with this change to a super food, or super shelf, um, the individuals will actually be able to walk in, and it'll be more like a grocery store environment, so they can walk around and they can select the foods they'll actually need, which also helps eliminate food waste, because if you're given food that, um, you can't eat or don't eat, right, it goes to waste, and so this allows a, more of that piece of it as well. Um, and then just a smaller update, so our, our Benton County Public Health Nurse, um, has been out in schools again. Um, she previously was at, um, at Foley School District, where she had about seventy staff present, did presentations on human trafficking and the concern that we're seeing in community. Recently, she presented to three different eighth grade classrooms for two weeks in Foley, um, and then in December for Foley High School, um, last week, I believe, or a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was. Couple more updates of things in the last couple of weeks, um, so right before the holiday, our staff, um, attended their basic life support training, their AED training, and their Stop the Bleed training, and so here's some, just some pictures. Um, this is part of, again, our readiness to respond. We have to complete our training, renew it every three years, so we were up, up and due for that, as well as catching up new staff, um, as well. So that training is there, and this is in the place of if we did have to respond and pop up a vaccine clinic, for example, our staff have to have that training in order to respond if there's any contraindications or any issues with vaccine, for example. Um, if somebody faints, you know, those sorts of things. Um, so I've got some pictures here, so this is just showing some of our staff doing the child and pediatric basic life support. Um, this is again with the AEDs, um, as well, and then we have the Stop the Bleed, which is about, um, utilizing tourniquets, um, as well. And just a big shout out to the City of Rice, as they provided the training for us and, in coordination to assure that we got what we needed for our staff as well. And then just a few other quick department updates, um, so we, I had mentioned last board meeting when I did updates that, um, we'll be doing our strategic planning for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine for our community health board, our public health department. Um, Minnesota Department of Health will be on-site this next month in February for us to complete our first, um, strategic planning session with our staff. And so at some point, we'll bring to the board a completed strategic plan for approval. The TA grant with the City of Rice for the Bend in the River Park, that was submitted, and so that's exciting. Um, we also had a review from the Minnesota Department of Health of our FEP, our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Duties. Um, that was completed, and we got response back from Minnesota Department Health that we're in really good standing, so that was really cool as well. Um, and then just to close out, closes out here, um, just again, just, uh, uh, to hone back in, you know, public health is really about everything that impacts our health, whether it's, um, access to the internet, or safe roads, or healthy foods, or the actual illnesses that make us sick. Um, our goal is to intervene down here in this primary prevention stage. Um, and then we, we want to do things by, we're working, looking at policies, we work with environment changes, we work in system changes, to assure that people have it easier to make the healthy choice, right? And then, um, we also do risk factors and early intervention as well. But then you think about all those crisis interventions, and our goal in public health is that we don't have those crisis interventions. You know, if we can reduce the car crashes, we can reduce the amount of fire and EMS response, we can reduce the overload and burden on the healthcare system. You know, if we can intervene, um, and do really good mental health prevention and try to address social isolation, we're gonna reduce the amount of cases that in crisis that they're seeing in human services. You know, if we can provide people with healthy foods and, um, access to jobs and internet and roads and cars, um, and we can change those systems so people can have those things, then we can reduce the need of those services, um, when we're looking at, you know, child protection and vulnerable adult abuse and, um, waivered services, for example. So on the spectrum here, you really could put almost all of our different county departments, because we all intersect along this, this channel, and public health way over here, um, which is where we like to intervene, but sometimes we're over here too, so we cross over and coordinate as well. Um, and it's also that notion of just like a car, right, we think about doing the preventative maintenance on our vehicles, we do those oil changes. Um, we do the preventative maintenance of our community, and if we don't do that preventative maintenance of our community, we have everybody in crisis at the same time, and that's what we're always trying to prevent. We don't want to see a lot of people breaking down at the same time. All right, so that's a wrap. Um, any questions for me? That was a lot. I went fast.
Madam Chair, I've got a few things I wrote down, if I can take a minute and ask Jacqueline, a couple different things.
Yeah.
Public nurse, uh, what's the holdup on that? Is that, what are we, what's the main reason why we can't fill that?
I think we have candidates, but we have some different, I'm trying to think of what I, what I kind of can't say. Um, we did find a really good candidate, but I think we've got to examine, um, our needs as an agency and what we, what we can negotiate on.
Okay.
Um, we have had a couple of different rounds. I think the other piece of it is mix of work duties. We have had requests for part-time positions, which we're recruiting for full-time, so I think there's just some different components there that we've got to navigate.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Yeah.
And I don't want to put you on the spot on specific dollars, but a lot of times we throw around, you know, what's the public health budget?
Uh-huh.
And then grant versus levy dollars for that, and again, I don't need a, a specific number.
We have about, now, this would be last, when I looked at the twenty twenty-five budget, so numbers have changed. I think it's about one point four million in grants, and then levy dollars, I think our budget's like around four hundred and fifty thousand. Total, for the year.
Perfect.
If I'm thinking right, I don't know, Monty, if you know, off the top of your head.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, I hear you, you're involved with T Z D.
Yes.
So, you know, that we should, maybe should have some future discussion about how you might fit in with our Highway twenty-three coalition.
Yep.
Um, especially Benton, Lacus Kinabic Pine, because right now we're working on a, uh, uh, hopefully to get a study done between Foley and I thirty-five for four lanes. So, and a lot of that has to do with some serious crap, crashes and traffic.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
Especially right in Benton County.
Especially, yes, absolutely. Um, couple other things, I, I'd like to have some future conversation with you about a potential rep for the care, fully care.
Oh, yes, let me, I'll write that down, yep, and I did, um, I do have somebody in mind with that and have talked to somebody about that as well, that will be doing our aging prevention.
Perfect, and then, uh, one last thing, uh, in one of the quadrants of, I believe you said the six things that comes out of the Department of Health that kind of directs public health, uh, protect against environment and health hazards, do you hear much about mold issues?
I don't have a lot of direct with mold, a lot of the mold, so the way that it works for Benton County, prior to our foundational public health money, is a lot of our environmental health services get directed to the State of Minnesota M D H office in St. Cloud. So we have a contact there who takes, um, all of the food, pools, and lodging matters, and then we get pretty much everything else. So oftentimes, like with mold, it would, it's probably more of like a rental situation or a housing situation, so then M D H takes it, so we're sometimes just the coordinator, like if they had a bigger issue, if it was like an apartment complex or something, they might reach out to us and ask for our community health specialist to help with the messaging and the education and that stuff. But yeah, for now, um.
We're not in mitigation and inspection and all that.
Right, we're not doing any of those.
All right.
Yeah, good question though.
Um, just let me look here really quick, I think that was, that'll do it, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions?
I just had one comment.
Yeah.
On there you had disasters and flooding. Wouldn't that fall more under the EM district?
It does fall on EM. So it's an, so there's two components to it, right? Public health has a role and emergency management has a role. But a lot of times our, so our public health and emergency manager are actually meeting oftentimes at minimum monthly, if not more frequently, because a lot of our plans intersect.
Okay.
And so the really cool thing about the two individuals that we have working together is that collaboration and coordination piece. There are definitely goals for public health versus EM. But if you think about a mass flooding situation, if individuals have to be evacuated, if they have to be sheltered, you know, human services would be part of that sheltering. Public health would be there addressing those health needs. So whether it's mass dispensing of supplies, if it's assessing health conditions, you know, those sorts of pieces. So we all kind of have our little component of that. Yep. But it's a lot of coordination, a lot of working together and a lot of assuring that our roles and duties have been practiced. So then when a situation does occur like that, we can respond quickly.
So, but basically EM or the emergency management would have the lead on that.
Yep.
Would take it. Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Jaclyn. Appreciate the information.
Yep. Thank you. I'll call for adjournment.
Okay. I'll move to adjourn, Madam Chair. One second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we'll go back to commissioner meeting updates.
I can start if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Anybody can start. Back in January eighth, and I actually had this on first, our Highway Twenty-three Coalition, some of us members did have a virtual meeting with Representative Schultz and Representative Nelson, who represents the Kinabik Pine City area. Of course, Representative Schultz goes over to, I believe, Ogilvy. And getting them involved in their input on, you know, potential bonding dollars to help with this project study. We're looking at about three and a half million dollars. That's good, the project study from Mindot to do the Foley to I thirty-five area. So we've had some preliminary discussions with that and we wanted to make sure they were on board and informed before they got into session. So that's why we really kind of tried to get that out in front of them. Did you have a question?
Yeah, on the, on the Twenty-three study, do you think Mindot's going to be willing to do from Foley to Malacca being that, I mean, they just spent.
I, I think we, and we recognize that, we're trying to look at that big picture of the long-term four lane. We know that the, for example, maybe the first priority will be Malacca to Mora.
Okay.
You know, we understand that. And then maybe backfill as this project goes. We're talking, this is twenty, thirty years out. But we've got to get the study done before we can move on anything.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of the spot we're in. On the ninth January Planning Commission meeting, actually was just a training session. There were two new members who attended, so that was good to have them on board. The thirteenth, of course, we had our cow with GLT and our commissioner meeting and goals. I did mention earlier, that same day I did have two BRE visits with BEP. One was with the Agency Five-Eleven here in town, which is a marketing firm there and residing in the old Foley Clinic where Doc Styles and Baumann used to be. So they have an office there. And we also met with Zilmer Insurance downtown Foley. In that evening, I think all of us were there, maybe not Commissioner Kapinski, but the public hearing or meeting at the Stock Rapids Government Center in regards to the Next Era Project and the Public Utility Commission, public hearing process. I'll be coming up on that. And last Friday, and I'm just, I bring this up mostly to prepare the rest of the board that I think you can plan on probably a, a large, a public hearing coming up in the ditch authority meeting on February fourth. As you know, CD nine and CD fourteen landowners did receive their assessments for the repairs on those ditches. Been a lot of questions. I met with a couple of landowners and Chris last Friday at his office for about an hour and a half going over those. It was interesting because one of the landowners, and he's absolutely right. He admitted, he said, you know, it, it's my own fault. I didn't attend the public hearing. It's my own fault. I didn't open up the packet from the county, you know, and all of a sudden now I have a twenty-five thousand dollar assessment that I've got to deal with. And I don't, and I don't bring that up to blame him. I just, I bring that up that we need to recognize that a lot of our landowners just weren't aware for whatever reason. And I told them, we're more than happy to take some ideas on how we're going to get people to these hearings because we can't hogtie them and drag them in. So we've got to do what we can do. You know, one thought was we make up a notice, a letter that maybe goes out with our property tax statements. You know, the majority of our county residents are going to see those and open them. And so maybe that's one way that we can actually get something in front of these landowners. So just preparing you for that, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to preach doom and gloom, but we may have a significant public hearing on February fourth with the ditch authority. That's all I had. Thank you.
I can go next.
Sure.
Commissioner Heinand and I had a career solutions meeting on January ninth. I'm very new to that board, so he has most of the updates. I'll leave that to him. And on the thirteenth, I went to the St. Cloud City Council meeting. Very, very interesting. Lincoln Center came up in there. They were going through their ordinance agreement for that facility because Harry was obviously there asking for more space, more, to open up some more space for bedding and stuff. I believe most of the commissioners were there when we went through that. So when you come into the building and their, their meal areas to the right, he wanted to open up some more of that area for sleeping area and, and other things. But currently, the ordinance read that a temporary shelter may extend the maximum length of stay from forty-five days to ninety days. They requested two different options from one twenty to one eighty, from one eighty to one twenty. The board did agree to up it from one, from forty-five to one twenty and from ninety to a hundred and eighty. They were asking for a fifty percent increase on the occupancy to be able to let fifty percent of that occupancy stay during those terms. And the current ordinance read ten percent, so they stayed with ten percent. They did not increase that. And that's kind of the update with that. Another meeting, and public utilities ones, meeting. I had a Mindon Township meeting. Nothing major came up in that. I did try to attend the Tri-Cap Action Program meeting and the information and stuff cannot be accurate because I drove there in the boonies. And it was, I know, but it was, I mean, there was no lights or anything back there. So it was pretty dark, but I, there was no one there.
Okay.
All right, we had our APO meeting. I did get the chair position this year, so we got a lot of things going on. We're going to work on getting all the counties, all the cities, all, everybody together and let people know what the APO does. Be a good, good one for you, Tim, too, just so you kind of see how it operates because I'm not sure if you know exactly. It took me a while to figure out because it, it only, there's only a couple of million dollars you deal with, but yet there's a lot more that comes in through the APO that gets funneled. So I never understood funding five hundred thousand of, of, of costs to gain two million dollars worth of funding, but there's a lot more that happens along that line. I start the AMC or the Public Safety Chair on Friday. So I asked Commissioner Pop last night a few things, so. I'll get blessed on that one because obviously the way that these run is usually our vice chair first. And that didn't happen, so. Kind of going in blind. I was at the Iron Street Distillery for, Commissioner of Deed was there on Friday. I told my wife I'd be home in a half an hour and it was three hours later. So they had a whole presentation. Commissioner Deed was there for, had to be two hours of it.
He lives in Benton County.
Yeah, he lives in Benton County. Yeah. Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah, ver, ver, yeah. Yeah. Very, very good presentation and very good guy, yeah. But there was a lot of people there. The mayor of St. Cloud, Jake Anderson was there. Bunch of different people. They had a whole presentation. And then we got tour the whole facility. It is amazing in there. So if you ever get a chance, go in there. Other than that, our cows and, and go from there.
Had a couple of things. We had MICA meeting. We officially brought in Anoka and, um, trying to think of that, Wright Counties. So that increased our funding a little bit. Officially signed the contract with our new executive director. And then, as you know, we got the MICA annual meeting on the thirtieth at the Wild Golf Legends in, since in Prior Lake. And that'll be coming out. And then I had a BEP loan committee meeting that we approved a loan for a business that's going to start in Foley. And I also had the Stock Rapids City one. And I was unable to attend the cow, so.
We missed you.
Yeah, thanks. Anything else? Any other commissioner comments?
We gave you lots of stuff.
Okay. Commissioner Concerns? Anybody have any commissioner concerns? All right, there's a list of committee of the holes before you on your death, on your dais.
And I have additional ones as well, so. Maybe we can start with this, Mr. Chair. The AMC legislative conference is coming up February twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Could we get a sense today of who is, is inclined to attend so Beth can begin registrations? Commissioner Kapinski?
Yes, tentatively.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yep.
Commissioner Pop?
Do we know if they're going to be in session?
We'll be in touch with Commissioner Heinand, so obviously there's hotel reservations required and so on, so. Again, that's February twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh.
And you'll make the reservations for the twenty-fifth, correct? Twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
All right. We're good there. All right. Next, Benton Economic Partnership invites you to attend a training session on tax increment financing and tax abatement financing. That event is March thirteenth from one to five, St. Cloud University Atwood Center. So again, that's being sponsored by Benton, I'm sorry, Benton Economic Partnership and the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation. It's March thirteenth, one to five, St. Cloud State University Atwood Center.
Is that, do they need registration?
They are asking for RSVPs.
Okay. Do they have a buy date?
By March first, by March first.
Okay.
I'm, I'm planning on.
All right, you're planning on?
I'm planning on going because that might sit well with the BEP.
Commissioner Pop, is, is go? Anyone else for today? Commissioner Kapinski, go?
I plan on depending on my schedule.
All right, so we'll go ahead and register you then.
Yeah. I know it's a, it's a very important.
Johnson, is it go?
It's a very important meeting when it comes to TIF districts and stuff because people have gotten away from that and, and that's how Sartell built their community. Yeah, you don't get a lot of the taxes right now.
Commissioner.
And you said that's on the thirteenth.
It is on March thirteenth from one to five.
I'll need to, yeah.
You'll let us know.
We're supposed to have a career solutions board meeting that day.
Could you please let Beth know if you've interested in attending? Thank you. Righty. We put these as standing, don't we? So we need to, okay, those are standing. All right, so back to the list. It's probably good to get your next government center project meeting on the calendar. When we met with GLT and, and Pete from Kentucky, we did not do that. So probably good to get that, a next one on your calendars.
Did they have some options?
I, I didn't have options from, from Evan and Pete.
I thought we had to wait for them to get back with something.
Well, what's, what's happening next is, Kentucky essentially is working on a refined project estimate for you. And I recall in this, in discussing with Pete, that's something they would potentially have done in about two weeks after our last meeting. So I don't necessarily think this has to be pushed out too far.
Next Monday?
The twenty-seventh? Monday, the twenty-seventh?
I worked it.
You put it right in the morning, yeah.
Eight-thirty?
So one twenty-seventh and eight-thirty, okay. Does it work? We'll let you know. Mr. Chair, next item on my, on my list was potentially scheduling public meetings, public informational meetings in open houses on the government center project. Are you prepared to get those on the calendar? And presumably these would be evening meetings, Stock Rapids, Rice, Foley. I should have come better prepared with, we don't, obviously don't want to have it on any nights that there's a city council meeting. Those typically are on Mondays, aren't they?
Foley's is on Tuesdays.
Foley's is Tuesday, though, okay.
Coincides with ours, yeah. I guess I'd be a little bit hesitant without Commissioner Heinand here with his schedule. I mean, I, I think we need to get on it, but without his calendar here, I think that might be a little tough.
Okay.
And maybe what we could do, just a suggestion, Beth or Monty could send out an email to full board saying come prepared on the February fourth meeting to set some dates.
Okay, and I'll make sure I, I'm fully aware of any.
Conflicts?
Well, it's not just that, it's, it's just an example. It's, you know, even though it may not be a council meeting, they may have their, their chambers booked for something.
Sure.
Right, so we've actually got to get, we've got to get those calendars for Rice, Foley and Stock Rapids. Presume, would we, in Stock Rapids, would we use the government's, the, the city council chamber or the, the community room?
Uh, I would assume probably a community room.
Community room, okay. So we got to make sure those rooms are open.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think we need to make sure that we got Mr. Henninger involved and, and we get this advertised so we get a lot of people there, hopefully.
Yes.
Board Chair Pop, this is a follow-up question. I've listened to both your, both Committee of the Holes from the thirteenth. You expressed sort of a consensus to try today to figure out the scheduling of these public meetings. But what I'm hearing is you want better scheduling. Commissioner Heinand's not here. You need to check other people's calendars.
It's facility calendars, right? That's the issue, yeah.
So that's sort of pushing it from today to February fourth.
That'd be the soonest then unless we can, yeah, somehow do it earlier, right?
I, I got a, what happens if you were to check with the facilities, Monty? Throw out some potential dates, knowing that Mondays and Tuesdays are probably the best for a lot of people.
And with that, do we know Commissioner Heinand back next Monday for the twenty-seventh? Or is he gone next week also? Do we know?
I think he's back.
I kind of wonder if he's gone.
I kind of wonder if he's going to be back.
Oh, is he skiing?
My thought was that maybe we could have some discussion at the cow on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know for sure either because I know he said he had back-to-back trips.
Well, by the twenty-seventh, we can have the facility calendars known.
Right, so we still may not have Commissioner Heinand's calendar.
You know, I think Mondays may work, except the first Mondays and third Mondays, I know Rice City Council meets.
Okay, well, to Mr. Chair, to Tim's point, it sounds like it's probably going to be the fourth before we can make a decision. Yeah.
We got to start these.
Yeah, and we're realizing we need to do it, but.
Fair enough, because I'm going to tee it up.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm going to tee it up this week, based on what you guys did at your cows. And I talked to Monty and I've interviewed him so we can do something very preliminary about where you guys are at. They need to be ready for February if you're going to lay meetings on.
Yep.
They need to have the warning because what happens to February disappears.
Sure.
Yep.
Quickly. And, and may I also say, just because we haven't had the calendar discussion, it may not be limited to February.
Right, it could go out, go past.
It could go, yeah.
And right now, you're preparing to get meetings scheduled.
Yes, correct. Yep.
Okay. Well, hopefully we can discuss this on the twenty-seventh and then we'll have, you all have dates and we'll have the facility dates and you can come up with. And I, and I, we need to, of course, have dates from Pete and, and Evan too because I presume you'll want your CM and your architect there to help answer questions and they can be part of the presentation. So a lot of people to coordinate.
Yes.
And things dates on, yeah, okay. Next thing I had was, I had a note that the next joint meeting of cities, townships and counties would be this winter. So I, I recall it was going to be, there was going to be two a year and the, the next one would be in a winter, a winter meeting.
I believe that. Um, I believe that, uh, BCATs in February. February, because I am gonna be gone for it, that's why I'm remembering that, but, um, I think it's February twentieth is the BCAT meeting at Minden this year.
Correct, seven-thirty.
Um, what's your thoughts about asking their BCAT board if we could just have a spot in their agenda and kinda do it at the same time?
Doesn't include the cities, I understand.
No, the cities could get invited potentially, I'm, I don't know, thinking out loud. I think you're gonna have to move it into March or April.
Yeah, I think, I think moving it would be better because.
I would move it to April, because March is too close, the townships are gonna, why go again?
We were just there.
You know, I think if we run a couple months after, after the townships, I mean, granted they can come, but.
Yeah, you know, a, a lot of them said at our last meeting, they said these are actually better than their BCAT meetings.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't think taking up a short, uh, short section on their meeting would be good.
No, I don't.
Let's do April, but maybe we should look, get a little further down the road and then set that, but maybe we can let, let people know tentative April timeframe.
That's what we usually do is about, I don't know, a month before, we send letters to each town clerk, city.
Yep.
City clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Let him know about this meeting. We give them, we try and give them pretty good advance notice.
Isn't always a Thursday that we do it, too?
Uh, you know, I know we wanna avoid, obviously, we don't wanna have any, same night as city council meetings, so stay away from Tuesdays and maybe Mondays, so, yeah.
They ask in Rice when we were gonna have another one, so they're definitely looking forward to it.
All right, well, we'll, we'll bring that one back for you, um, looking at April, okay. Next is the Quarterly Human Services, Public Health. The first is question, do you wish to continue having those? The Quarterly Human Services and Public Health Committees of the Whole, as you know, remember we meet up on the third floor conference room and it's devoted exclusively to those two departments. You wanna continue those?
Yeah, I think the attendance is really good from employees.
Have Human Services or Public Health indicated if they want it quarterly? If they need it quarterly?
Yeah, yes, I, yeah, I'm talking with Sandy, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, yeah, from my standpoint is we don't need a meeting just to have a meeting.
Right.
There's good content, let's do it, because I think Jacqueline gave a very good update today on what they've been working on.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to do a two-hour meeting for another update, you know, let's, if there's, if there's things that they're working on that we need to have a call, then, then let's do it.
And I would say also that we try to tie it to another cow day.
Yep.
Maybe not a GLT one, but.
So, um, I'm, I'm wondering if you could at least start with the first one and everything will just kinda flow from there.
Sure.
So, uh, when might your first one be? I think in the past, these have tended to be Mondays. They've been on Monday, Monday morning like about either nine or ten, um, so.
Nine.
Mondays have been the test practice. So when might the first one be? To kick things off.
For instance, I could do February third, but I'd have to be at eight o'clock, because I have an MRC meeting at ten. I don't know if that's an option for the rest of you or not. Um, Commissioner Pop and I have meetings the following Monday.
Oh, yeah. I could do February third, I think.
Or the seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, I can't.
President's Day, yeah, okay. I'm gone the twenty-fourth, so.
You're gone the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Is, is a couple weeks gonna give them enough time to figure out if they need one?
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't.
February third?
The, the February third one? Because that's only two weeks away.
Two weeks away? I, I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't, I don't have a good sense of what their topics that they have for you are. I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure knowing, it's easy to come up with lots of topics, so.
Tentatively set at the third?
Yep.
The third.
The first one would be February third, okay, at?
At eight, at, at least that, I don't know if you guys wanna do that early, I have to leave like at nine forty-five.
Why don't we say eight-thirty then? Or eight, eight, eight is fine with me.
I don't know how that works for employees, some of them just barely get to work.
Do eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty, okay.
I'll just leave when I need to.
Okay. Well, that gets us our first one. Uh, can we go ahead and schedule the remaining three?
Sure.
So, um, that pushes us into April or May? May? April or May?
Hmm. Let's go, or what about, uh, oh my God, I got, April's a big conference month for me.
Okay, do, do May then.
Do May?
Yeah.
May fifth?
I'm gonna go May then.
Do you wanna do it after our board meeting on the sixth?
No.
No? Okay. May fifth would work for me.
Yeah, if we do it early in the morning again.
Wait, wait a minute, when is that?
That's twenty-ninth to the second. It's a week before.
Okay.
So potentially May?
Fifth.
May fifth at eight-thirty.
Yep.
Okay.
And these can still move around.
Right, sure. Just gives them a little bit of a.
Yep, all right. So previously we had February third, now we're at May fifth, okay, that's two out of four, so maybe August or so?
Okay.
Isn't that the fair?
Think, not, I think it's, I don't know, I haven't seen. Well, let's just Google it and see, I don't know. You happen to know Beth?
I'm looking.
Okay.
Benton County Fair?
Yep.
That would.
It's the first full week in August, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
No, they'll start in July. Yeah, they might start the thirtieth.
Uh, that, that's what happened last year, last time, yeah.
Because we crossed up with Sterns.
Yeah. They're not worried about Sterns, so. Usually like right in their, in their head, they have the dates right in the, in the logo.
County twenty-ninth through third.
Yeah, there's.
July twenty-ninth through the third.
So we could do the.
On the fourth. We could do the fourth then.
Okay.
That's okay with you.
Mm-hmm, August fourth, when to go?
Eight-thirty again?
Eight-thirty.
When to go? So that'd be like, you know, November or December?
November third.
November third.
Is that hunting or?
Is that for hunters or is that not?
No.
I'm gonna say that, uh, beginning in November is never good.
Seventeenth?
November seventeenth.
I could do.
Okay, again at eight-thirty, all right. So am I hearing you say that you, you, you wanna have these if there's meaningful content?
Right.
If there's not, then we'll cancel it.
Correct.
We'll just meet to meet, got it, all right. Next is employee forums. I heard the board in, in the goal setting say you'd like to continue to have the employee forums. Typically, there was a bit at eight fifteen on the day of a board meeting.
Yes.
Last year you had three, okay?
Yes.
So when would you like to have your first, your first one? Again, on the day of a board meeting at eight fifteen.
Why don't we do the?
February eighteen?
February eighteen, yeah.
That's what I was just gonna say.
February eighteenth.
Okay, February eighteenth, so again, a bit eight fifteen, and all right, and then when's your second one?
June seventeenth?
June seventeenth, okay, and then?
October seventh?
Okay, February eighteenth, June seventeenth, October seventh, eight fifteen here in the boardroom. All right, uh, moving on, uh, I understand there was a desire to have some discussion about the Human Services Deputy Director position. Could that happen on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
At the calendar twenty-seventh?
Of this month?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yep, after our GLT one, yeah.
Yes.
If Commissioner Hein is back.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, so this is sub, this is, this subject change. I texted him to find, remind me what his schedule is and I haven't heard back from him, so.
On a backup date?
Let's do that, yep. And this could be a backup date for GLT, too, right? So, February third and the tenth?
Not the tenth.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth, we could.
February seventeenth.
No, that's President's Day.
It's President's Day.
Oh, yeah, I can't do it anymore.
I'm gone the twenty-fourth. February is gonna be, you know, we might have to move into a different day. Um, we are, we do have a cow on the eleventh, how about after the airport cow?
Yeah, uh, to do GLT and then Human Services, sure.
Yeah, we're here.
Sure, and I know, if I hadn't told everybody, the, that date works for the airport folks.
It does.
It does, right, I confirmed that with Bill Towel.
Okay, so what time are they gonna be here?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
Yes, so, uh.
Pile it on there.
Yep.
So let me say, I understand quickly, so is the eleventh the backup date for GLT and Human Services Director? Otherwise, it, we confirm it'll be on the twenty-seventh, the date, right? Got it.
We need to have Commissioner Hein, full board for that, I.
Right, so backup date is Feb. eleventh, got it. All right, um.
And, and.
Let's, if we could, so, I'm not sorry, I'm not done yet, so, uh, let's, we should put, just for again to be conservative, this, this National, uh, Public Health Conference on your Committee of the Whole listing, it's April twenty-ninth through May second, San Antonio, we'll get the more specific address.
It's April twenty-ninth through what?
April twenty-ninth through May second.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
The National Public Health Association Conference in San Antonio.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yep.
Yeah.
Lastly, lastly, Mr. Chair, is Beth tells me it's time to schedule the, the, uh, Years of Service recognition, we do that twice a year, uh, before a board meeting, um, at seven AM. Beth proposes to me here Feb. eighteenth or March, excuse me?
Employee forums on the eighteenth.
February eighteenth or March fourth? February eighteenth or March fourth? So this be recognized, folks, for who have a Years of Service milestone in the second half of twenty-four?
I think it has to be March fourth, because we've got employee forums on the eighteenth.
Yeah. Oh, we just set those, right, yeah.
March fourth.
Forums, okay, yep, so it's gonna be March fourth, so seven AM, we'll start in the sheriff's office and then go from there, so March fourth.
Seven AM?
Sev, yes, sir, uh, seven AM.
Sheriff's Office, then highway, then here.
I just grabbed the updated college report.
Oh, that was brutal.
Monty, uh, before we approve the cows, may I also suggest to, do what we can do to keep the county board agenda light on February fourth in case we have a lengthy ditch authority public hearing?
Sure.
Whatever, I mean, I, I guess my request is not to load it up if we don't have to.
Do we, do we have any board member potential absences for future board meetings?
Yes, maybe the fourth.
Maybe the.
Just kidding.
Oh, no, you're not.
Well, and the reason why, the reason why I ask is because we need to schedule the department head performance evaluation spread over two meetings, but I wanna make sure all board members are here. Will all board members be here on the fourth?
Um, potentially not gonna be here on the fourth?
The fourth, potentially, and, and lie to that, then we won't, we won't schedule those until then, we'll have them February eighteenth and then March fourth.